Gentlemen, if you'll please take your seats, we're going to go ahead and get started. This time, we'll call to order the meeting of the Galt City Council. Liz, would you please conduct the roll call?
Councilmembers Haynes.
Here.
Haynes.
Here.
Claire. Raboy.
Here.
Meredith.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, I'd like to ask that you please stand for a moment of silent prayer. I'm going to read a few names off for a second here. A lot of you heard about the fire that took place out in the county island area of the city today. I have the names of the two victims. It was Maria and Jacqueline Hernandez. So, we'd like to ask that you keep them and their families in your prayers during this moment of silent prayer. We also lost two flea market vendors in the last couple of weeks. That was Loretta and Ken Tate. They were 25-year members of the Galt Flea Market. They sold hot dogs out there, and they were killed in an automobile accident coming back to California. So, please keep them in your prayers as well. Please remain standing for the flag salute presented by Cub Scout PAC Six.
Color, color guard attention. Audience, please remove all hats. Color guard advance. Color guard post colors. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two, color guard dismissed.
At this time, I'll turn the floor over to our city attorney to disclose any reportable action from our closed session meeting.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, there's no reportable action out of closed session this evening. There are several items that are pending, and the council is going to reconvene in closed session to finish those items at the end of the meeting.
Thank you. Liz, would you please read our video statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast, Shore West, and Strategic Technologies Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Agenda approval additions and/or deletions? Are there any councilmembers that would like to pull anything off of the consent calendar? Okay. Any recommendations by staff? Takes us to public comment.
Don't we have?
No. Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. You're requested that you state whether you live within the Galt City limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Tracy Gross?
Hi, Tracy Gross. I live in the city, and this is Mia. Mia and I have come back to tell you guys how things went at the Stand Down. And before I give you an update, I'm going to turn it over to Mia and let her tell you how her shampoo drive went.
Hi, my name is Mia, and the shampoo drive went well. We've raised over 400 bottles of shampoo. I would like to thank Rayleigh's, the teachers in McCaffrey and Lake Canyon, Troop 1222, Troop 3805, and my troop 311. I'd like to thank Sherri Daly for giving me this opportunity to lead this project, and I would like to thank my little sister who helped too. And I would like to thank the council.
We're really proud of Mia because, you know, we had adult groups that took on the other components of the comfort kits, and unfortunately, none of them managed to collect the 400 of each item that we needed, and we had to go shopping except for shampoo. So, before I let Mia go, I want to present her with a Stand Down pin. And if you notice, she's got a Stand Down shirt on.
Thank you.
I also wanted to really quickly thank Sherri Daly and her troop. We had a local attorney, and I turned the check over to the troop to cash. I don't remember what his name was, but he sent us a check for $25. The Sliver family donated a whole bag of deodorant. Jerry Stripling donated us clothes, and of course, they were all cowboy shirts, and some of the guys were just in heaven when they saw those cowboy shirts. Pat Maple donated some clothes. Andrew Meredith and his family donated us children's clothes and toys, and we always hope that there's not going to be any children up there as dependents, but there usually is. Darryl Clare donated some men's clothes that were his father's, and when he gets back, you guys let him know I want to talk to him because I've got a really, really heartwarming story I want to tell him.
Just to clarify, you had said that Darryl actually was able to find some suits, things like that.
Well, yeah, and I'll tell you guys a story. I did see one of the veterans with jacket on, and he was so proud telling me that he had pants to match and a shirt and that he had an interview coming up, and he was really excited about being able to dress the part for the interview. And, you know, Darryl donated some really, really nice stuff, and I think there was at least five complete suits that looked like they'd just come from the cleaner, and so really nice stuff. But we had a really hard time collecting large men's clothes to donate. I'm not looking at anybody, but so I ended up going and doing some shopping, and I went to the local thrift stores. And when I went down to the one, I don't know the name of it, further down on Lincoln Way that Sharon Gillis was working at or running, I went in and I found some great stuff, bigger size stuff. And she told me $7 for everything I could stuff in a bag, and I did some stuffing. And then, of course, she wouldn't let me pay for it when she found out it was for the veterans. So, I really appreciate her. And I'm, you know, I'm really proud to be a part of Galt and seeing how everyone cares because we are the very end of Sacramento County, and people kind of forget that, but Galt really steps up when somebody's in need. I don't have the final numbers for the count. That usually takes a couple of weeks. But I think it was very close to about 400. There were a lot of new faces, a lot of younger veterans, which was kind of sad. We lost a few veterans this year. There was a couple that was waiting to get into a place and died right after Christmas of exposure. There was another man that had just gotten off the streets, just gotten his place, his life was going good, and he had a heart attack. But at least we're out there trying to give them that opportunity to get to that place in their life. It's kind of sad that our veterans come home and they become POWs when they get back to the United States. You know, they're prisoners of war because of their mental illnesses and their physical disabilities and the addictions that they've probably gotten into to get through what they've had to deal with when they're in war. So, I hope that as a community, we can continue to find things to do for them, and I've actually got a couple ideas I'm going to bring back to you guys very soon. On a positive side, there's a lot of success stories. You know, the ones that make it through rehab and make it out on their own and get jobs. Sometimes we have guys that show up with their name tag on because they just got a job, and they're so excited to show you, "See, I'm, you know, I have that job. I'm working now, and I'm going to make it." And a lot of them that have gone through the program come back as volunteers the next year. And the Stand Down is mainly run by participants that have made it and come back to make sure that they help other people get off the streets and make it too. So, another really cool thing that, I guess, the Boy Scouts are gone, but we're out at Camp Pollock, and it's huge, and there's at least those 400 participants, and at least at any given time, about 200 volunteers. But when they raise and lower that flag out there, you could hear a pin drop. Everyone stops. Those men all salute the flag.
Tracy, can you wrap it up?
Sure. Real quickly, I want to tell you, there's something through Loews and Fishes called day labor, and it's a way to call and get someone to come down and do a job for like one day or for a couple of days. And we've actually been able to connect one of the veterans with a local business that might get to come down here and start working in Galt, so we're pretty excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis Wire?
Well, I've got quite a few things on my mind tonight that I usually always do. One thing is I would like to thank Donald Haynes for filling in for Darryl Clare for us last night at the GSMOL chapter meeting at Three Palms Mobile Estates. He gave us an excellent presentation on Measure R, and I hope that a lot of people watch this TV program out there in the community. I have Comcast myself, so I can watch Metro Cable because Measure R is just critical to the survival and the thriving of this community. For those that don't know, there would be a half-cent sales increase on taxable items only if this is passed in November. It would not affect groceries or prescription drugs. And this would bring eventually, hopefully within six months, we'd start seeing more police officers on the street as the revenue comes in. The goal is seven more officers, and this would really help in terms of home equity and the future of Galt as it expands. My heart is really heavy about the fire that happened in the warehouse. I don't know if it was within city limits or outside of city limits. It doesn't make much difference that happened. And wondering if there's going to be an investigation by the Fire Department or whatever appropriate agencies, the Police Department, as to why a lady and her two-year-old were allowed to sleep in the conditions like that with no sprinkler systems and just to be there, a two-year-old. And I don't know what other people were around, but I didn't like the idea myself, and I hope she isn't some kind of undocumented person that's here and just working under the table trying to make a living. I heard that her husband is waiting deportation, and I hope that these people aren't being taken advantage of within the city of Galt or anywhere in close proximity. Nobody should have to work for below minimum wage or work under the table in such conditions. This is just as bad as the lady in Lowdy that died pregnant because she didn't have enough. She died, she was pregnant, and she died because she didn't have enough water picking grapes. So, we don't need this kind of association in the city of Galt. And the last thing I want to say is, when you're thinking about beautification here in Galt, maybe you can think about Palm Springs. I don't know if we have enough territory to do something like that, but how about a bunch of pools and palm trees? This is the kind of vision I see as a resort, spas, resort destination for people in the area. That's only one idea for the city of Galt, and I'm really excited about the beautification project that needs to be done. We don't have old trees like Lowdy in Sacramento. I don't know whatever happened to them because we're an old city, but there don't seem to be many around. And two minutes is enough for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Carl Boner?
Carl Boner, city of Galt. And I just had a few questions on the solar, the solar program that's going around now that the mayor is advocating. One question I have, is this a duplication of the Smuds effort in solar? And if it is, how is the cost comparable to Smuds? And is it going to be higher or is it going to be lower? Now, anytime you set up a special district and have bonds, you're going to have a setup fee, and you're going to have costs involved. Who's going to pay the cost on these? And is the setup going to be subsidized by the city of Galt? Our community isn't a more affluent city such as Berkeley is, and maybe this isn't quite for us at this time, not that it won't be later. But why aren't we observing the hopes and successes of the city of Berkeley to see how it's going to play out there? And then, keeping in mind, regardless of how it plays out in Berkeley, keeping in mind, Galt is a much different locale, different income factors are involved here, maybe then taking a harder look at it at a later date. And does the city, if they're going to be putting money, have the money for a premature and questionable effort in this area? Regardless of the pluses of the solar program, the fact of the matter is that we've got more pressing local issues to deal with here in Galt, and I suggest we get on with those. One of them being, where is the money coming from to start the construction of the C Street overpass interchange? It seems to be that according to the figures out there, it's going to cost us nearly $25 million. And I've not seen anything as more than a couple million dollars that's earmarked and set aside for that, possibly if it's even set aside. But where's the 20-plus million dollars that's going to make that a reality, that's going to come off of fees and impact, traffic impact fees? How are we going to start that thing with that overpass, which is imperative for the economic development of the city of Galt? How are we going to start that within the next 10 years if we don't even have the money for it? I don't think we can borrow from Peter and pay Paul $20 million and anywhere come close to balancing the budget for the next 40 or 50 years. Let's stick with some of the local issues. Let's get them accomplished. Let's get them under control. Then, let's look at a solar program. Thank you.
Fred Gethel?
Fred Gethel, I live in the city. I've got a comment on the website. I really like the streaming video. I think that's a great addition to the website. However, since the streaming video's gone up, the packets have disappeared, and it's a little hard to make intelligent comments about things that are on the agenda when you don't know what it is that's on the agenda. I mean, you know, like-
I can clarify that real fast because I just had the same question for Liz when we came in this morning. And what it is, the packet is actually there. You'll see if you look here. You've got the rectangular boxes. If you go and click on one of them, I lost my mouse. Maybe you could find it. If you click on one of the boxes here. Just click on the subject. It actually brings it up. Maybe we'll try to put something on the website so that that clarifies.
That was the one thing I don't think I did try. Thank you.
Sandy Russell? And it actually, I'll just comment on that while Ms. Russell's coming up. It actually makes it easier. You aren't downloading an entire packet that could take 10 to 15 minutes. You're only uploading the agenda, and any staff report that you want to click on, you upload that at the time, but it really saves time in the processing and the uploading of the agenda. So, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Sandy Russell, and I am not a resident of Galt. My husband, Tom, and I live in Elk Grove, and I'm here to invite the council members and the citizens of Galt to the Elk Grove Library's Centennial Birthday Celebration. The Elk Grove Library was opened on October 19, 1908, before any of us were ever even thought of, hopefully. In 1906, a young woman named Harriet Eddy was appointed the principal of the Elk Grove Union High School. There were only four graduating seniors that year. Because the high school was not accredited, students wanting a higher education had to attend Sacramento High School because it was accredited. By 1908, the Elk Grove High School was in a better position to become accredited, but the lack of a library was stopping that process. So, Ms. Eddy opened the first free county library in the state in the corridor of the school. And the school was just a two-room school. You guys all have an invitation with a picture of the school, yes?
Very nice.
Thank you. I did that on my computer. It may be possible some students from Galt even attended one of these, you know, one of these schools, but they won't be around anymore either. The Friends of the Elk Grove Library are very proud to have the first free county library in California and proud to commemorate its 100th birthday. The birthday celebration is being held on Sunday, October 19, at the Grange Hall on Elk Grove Boulevard from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., and hopefully, everyone in the room and the council members and all of you can make it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sandy.
Al Baldwin?
Good evening, Al Baldwin, a concerned citizen of Galt, and it's a city of character. In speaking of character, the Galt Community Character Coalition put on a Galt Diversity Fair on the 6th, and it was really nice. And I know most of you up there attended it, and we definitely appreciate that. It was really great. It had a lot of entertainment, a lot of food, a lot of fun. It was our first, and it won't be the last, and there was a lot of people there and a lot of excitement, and we really appreciate your coming to it. It was really wonderful. The two items, though, I need to ask about tonight, I was asked about by some other citizens, and it's just two items. One of them, and probably Works will probably be able to answer this maybe, on C and Civic, we have some stoplights. And a month or two of months ago, they did some street work, and they had, I guess, adjusted the stoplights or something. But the concern of the people that are, a couple of them that have asked me, is that when you're coming off the freeway and you're going west on C Street, there's a left-hand stoplight that goes into the flea market or the city. And that left-hand light goes on whether there's a car there or not, and it stays on for approximately 20 to 25 seconds. And what happens is, the people that are going west on C Street, and it turns green, you can go west, but the ones that are coming east have to wait for that left-hand signal to change back. And that backs up a lot of the cars, and it makes a lot of congestion for some people. And I was wondering if maybe you could just change that left signal, or the others were thinking, to 15 seconds instead of longer. And I think that would help the flow, and that's what they're suggesting too. They didn't want to come, so they asked me. And the next one was, we just put stop signs at Lake Canyon. Well, the questions have come up, when is the Crillion and Twin Cities stoplight going up? Because people are still doing it. They're running the stop signs like somebody suggested they would, and they're doing exactly what you said, and they're slowing down, but only because they have to stop and then speed up real quick again. But they're taking a shortcut, and I was wondering, they were saying there's nothing going on over there. There's no pre-work, no digging or anything, so they're kind of getting concerned because it's getting late in the year, and summer's almost over, and they haven't seen any progress. So, I was hoping that maybe you could give an answer or somebody could on the progress of that.
We're currently in designing that signal. We have 60% plans in my office. We're dealing with Caltrans, so it takes a while to process the encroachment permit. We have plans to bid the project later this fall and probably build it probably in December or January. It will take approximately three months to order the poles themselves, so even if we award the contract in December, January, it's probably going to be February, March before we see a lot of construction going on in that area.
Well, thank you. They were in the impression it might be done earlier, and that's what they were hoping for. But other than that, thank you very much. I want to compliment Don Haynes. He's been conducting some Measure R group meetings, and they're extremely productive, and he's done a very good job at it. We all have heavy assignments, and he's pushing really hard. So, I'm for Measure R. Everyone on the council has stated they're for Measure R. What we want are more police and safety in this town, which is really nice, and I know it's a little negative, but the city can't really touch it and use it for anything else but police and safety. Okay? And so, vote for Measure R when it comes up. It's going to really help the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Thank you.
Dick Smith?
My name's Dick Smith. I've been a resident here for 14 years. I hadn't planned on speaking tonight, but when I looked at the agenda, I decided I wanted to talk. I have no notes or anything. I want to also tell you a little bit about my background because I think it's relevant to what's going on. I spent 40 years in the computer industry. We moved here in 1994. I have lived all over the country. My wife and I have bought and sold 12 different houses from five or six different developers. We bought products from developers because they were competitive, and it was a good product. And I think it's time that this city woke up to the fact that we have in this city right now developers who have done a fine, fine job for our city. People like Mike Guttridge and his family, Elliot Morrison and Keystone. People will not buy these products if they're not competitive. So, why in the world, over the years, do we keep demonizing the developers? They're in business to make money. I've never been taking a dime out of a developer. I have worked very off and on with people. When we bought our house here in 1994, I worked with Jim Guttridge, who is Mike Guttridge's dad, and I'll tell you about it. We looked all over Sacramento and finally concluded this is a great place to buy. Secondly, my son and his wife and two kids live here in town. My oldest daughter lives here in town because they selected this town over the years. When we went and talked to Jim Guttridge about buying a house, we didn't have our house sold in Southern California yet, and Jim said to us, "Don't worry about it. You've picked out the lot, and when you sell your house, we will notify you if somebody else wants that lot." It was a handshake. There was no paperwork involved in anything. So, four months later, we called him and said, "We've sold our house." We came up, and when we finalized the house, that was the first piece of paper we ever signed. This is the kind of people we have dealt with over the years, and I want to tell you that developers are not bad people. They are in business to make a profit like any other corporation in this country. The reason I also want to talk about tonight, I looked at the agenda item on here, it says conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. This has been going on for years, and I think it's time that the people in this town got a little bit more information about some of the problems that we are faced with. I know you have closed meetings and can't talk about these things, but it's time that you woke up and told the people about this town, about the financial implications that has been going on here for years. Thank you.
Jim Ferguson?
My name's Jim Ferguson. I'm a resident of the county. I've been a longtime Galt area resident. Also own property in the city.
I'm sorry, are you a Galt resident or a county resident? I'm sorry.
County resident.
You're a county, okay, thank you.
Yes, but I do own property in the city of Galt. I am delivering a letter to the city clerk at this meeting to report multiple violations of Galt's ordinance, limiting campaign contributions and imposing reporting requirements. These violations were committed by the Consumers Committee Together, or Consumers Communities Together PAC with Lori G. Huer as treasurer. The complaint alleges that citizens and voters in the 2006 council election were deprived of the true identities of those supporting Meredith, Haynes, and Molson. It appears from the record, a sham state committee was purposely set up to skirt City of Galt Elections Code. With Mr. Raboy available as an advisor and technical architect of the Galt Code, we are not sure how such a grievous action could take place. I asked the city clerk to appoint an independent prosecutor to pursue these violations, which could result in the removal of one- could result in the removal of one or more sitting members of the Galt City Council and Planning Commission. Given Mr. Raboy's particularly caustic remarks, calling the businessmen of this community crooks for missing a reporting deadline, and devoting his personal time and resources to trying to obtain the highest possible penalty for that violation, it will be interesting to see if he exhibits the same zeal in prosecuting these multiple violations of the city ordinance he championed. According to the ordinance, there are criminal penalties for these violations, and so I wonder if we will be hearing him call the participants in this effort to purposely evade the Galt City Ordinance to obtain an unfair advantage, crooks who belong in jail. If he chooses not to pursue these matters with the same zeal, then we will know his outrage is simply anger at those who disagree with him, and is nothing more than a personal vendetta over his losing position on the no-growth proposition R. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have a question for you. When you say to pursue them with the same avail, what do you mean?
Call them crooks?
Same avail of whom?
Pardon me?
I'm not sure I understand.
He's talking about the Chamber of Commerce and their $39,000 fine from the state, is that what you're talking about?
Right.
You mean the criminal violations, is that what you're talking about? That the state rules?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, quite frankly, too, I have a comment for a couple of you up there. I've been called insane and a liar, and I really, you know, don't appreciate that, but if we want to get into the gutter, we can do that. Thank you.
Ruven Epstein?
My name is Ruven Epstein, and I live in the city of Galt. There are several things tonight. One, on 5th Street, going north at C Street, there is a "right turn only" sign on a post. I'm not sure why it's there, but it is there. My guess is very few people notice it, because I'm not sure how long it took before I noticed it. I would suggest an arrow painted on the street, like some of the other corners in Galt, showing people by looking at the street that it's the right turn. If there's a reason for the sign, I think the arrow is warranted for safety purposes. Also, there have been a number of remarks tonight and other times about safety in Galt. And one of the reasons that makes people feel safe is good operating streetlights. A number of them get burnt out, flicker on and off because the bulbs are in the process of burning out. We just had one by my house that got replaced. I talked to the guy who came out in the truck in the morning. He said they have a problem because they don't get notified of, very many. Well, the only time you can find out if the streetlights aren't working is at night. The only people who are regularly out at night are the police. I would suggest that some simple reporting form be made up, so as the police drive around and have time, not taking away from other duties, they can jot down which streetlights are not working right, either off or flickering on and off. That way, it can be reported to the building department, and proper action can be taken, so we have the maximum number of lights available. It shouldn't cost anything extra, and I think the benefits would be well worthwhile. The other thing is that there has been a fair amount of talk about recycling and water-saving and so on. Brought something in that I got this weekend. I think you can read that. This is a recirculation pump, goes on a hot water heater. It pumps out hot water, runs up to the farthest faucet away. It has a valve built into the device that's at the faucet. When it hits 98 degrees, it opens up and the water can come out of the faucet. Before that, the water gets recirculated to the cold water pipe, goes back down to the water heater, and it heats up again. So if you get up in the morning and you turn on your water, you don't have to let it run for some time with the water going down the drain, wasting water, loading up the wastewater treatment plant even more. It simply keeps the water within the building until it's at 98 degrees, then it'll come out of the faucet, and then it'll warm up even more once it starts flowing. This was at Home Depot. It was $200. I brought in information on it from the internet. There are a number of other things like it. This is designed for retrofit. You don't have to do anything. Anybody can put it in. It goes on the water heater. Another thing goes on the, underneath the sink or the faucet, farthest away. The only drawback that I found out about so far is that it does put warm water into the cold water pipe. So let's say it's in the bathroom sink. If you turn on cold water, it'll be a little bit warm for a while, because it's loaded up with the warm water going back. But for a lot of people, it's not a problem, and if you're doing this in new construction, you can run a separate return line, so it all stays within the hot water system. It doesn't cost that much more. It saves, they say, up to 11,000 gallons a year, plus some more energy. I think it's something, if we're looking into low-flow toilets and other things like that, it's another item that can be looked at. I've mentioned it to the city council several times over several years, and nobody seemed interested, but maybe we're interested now. So, for what it's worth, I haven't put it in yet, obviously. I just got it Saturday, and we'll see what happens. I may be able to give you a better report later.
Is it an electric one or a gas?
This, it's electric. It's a small pump. It's got a 10-foot cord. It plugs into a wall out near the water heater. And it simply sits on top of the hot water pipe. Basically, it goes in between the water heater and the hot water pipe going into your plumbing system. And then, at the other end, there is another valve, a bar like this, fittings on each end, and then two Ts. And as I say, it blocks off the water from going to the faucet until it hits 98 degrees. So, as I said, there are a number of different brands around that are similar. They also, in new construction, like if you go to a motel or a hotel, usually you turn the water on, and it's hot right away. Those have a separate return line, and it's pumping all the time. This has a programmed timer. You can set it on, so it's only on in the morning. If you get up each day, and you take a shower at 6:00, you can have it come on at 5:30, and you're gonna have it turn off again at 8:00. And the rest of the time, the water's normal. Some of the comments from people who had bought them wrote in, somebody said, "Because it puts warm water in the cold line, it can be a problem." They, what they've done is they just unplug it in the summer, when you don't have that much of a weight for hot water. But it's something worth knowing about, and I suspect that by talking to some plumbers and plumbing supply places, you can learn a lot more of what else is out there.
And it's easy to put in?
All the comments were yes. And as they say, it's just all you need, basically, is a couple of wrenches. You loosen up the line. Well, you want to turn the water off, too.
Oh, yeah.
You loosen up the line at the top of the water heater, where the hot water goes out. This plugs in between that line and the water heater, and then that pump plugs into the electric outlet. And then at the faucet, you have to undo the hoses that come from the water lines to the faucet, and then this valve hooks in between. They said everything comes with it, and people were surprised that they didn't have to run out and buy any more parts. So, as I said, this is one brand, and I don't know if it's still being made or not. It was kind of confusing from what I got on the internet. But I would say there are others around, and there are other designs that could be put into new construction that were even better.
Okay. And you'll let us know how that comes out?
If I don't get electrocuted or scalded, yes.
Nice shirt, by the way.
Very nice. Thank you.
John Slaughterback?
John Slaughterback, and I live in the city of Galt, and I've lived here for eight years. And for eight years, I've heard about a wastewater problem. And these flyers we got has a lot to do with our wastewater problem. We want to build out the wastewater plant. We got a bunch of flyers through the mail, and I'd like to make some comments about the flyers, the flyers. But as I said, I've lived here, and I've been hearing about wastewater problems for eight years. And for those eight years, there's been a building boom, and the city has voted for and passed two school bonds I'm paying for, and I'm helping pay for a new sewer plant upgrade. The city has given us many warnings about this wastewater problem, and we've ignored it. The citizens of Galt have ignored it. I'm gonna give you a few of the examples. Prior councils' majority had four years to address the city's wastewater problem and approve of a senior development adjacent to the sewer plant. Where was this group when the prior council was in office? Why didn't they get some help if they couldn't seem to do anything for four years? Why didn't they get some help out of this group? Prior councils' majority, four years ago, addressed the wastewater problem, I mean, prior councils had four years to address the wastewater problem and approve of its senior development. Prior councils' majority spent part of their time searching the countryside, looking for some mystical solution to our wastewater problem. It was called a feasibility study, and included 17 options, which was trimmed down to about one option that we have today. Cost for this venture, $400,000. Where was this group then? We lost our public, prior Public Works Director, Doug Galt, because he didn't agree with the direction and management of the city. Another warning. The city spent thousands of dollars in an effort to hire a new Public Works Director. I think it was $25,000. It might have been 45. 45 comes in there somewhere. And again, the citizens of Galt's money. Another warning. Prior councils spent thousands of dollars leasing church property, which did nothing for our wastewater problem. It only dug the hole deeper. Another warning to the citizens of Galt. Where was this group then? Prior councils spent a million dollars to increase the height of the treated wastewater pond, so the wastewater pond would hold more treated water. Another warning. The city spent a million dollars for bio-solids off-hauling. What is bio-solids? It's our excess waste. We didn't, we don't have enough land to get rid of our excess waste. A million dollars to haul it off. Another warning. Prior councils spent thousands of dollars in legal fees to obtain a stay, a postponement of the upgrade to the wastewater treatment plant from Regional Water Control Board. Another warning. Where was this group then? The prior council lacked leadership skills. We needed that group four years ago, not now. I'm sure there are some who would be willing to give you an excuse for doing nothing for four years, if you would like to hear these excuses. Now this group would like to put prior councils' mentality back in office, so we can go back and re-address the general plan, and probably re-address the, what we're doing to the wastewater It's upsetting to me. If this group wanted to do something, why didn't you do it four years ago? We didn't do nothing for four years. We did all of these things that I just told you about, spent money, searching around the countryside for 17 options, and why weren't you here then? You wanted to help. Now, it looks to me like you want to replace Raboy and put somebody else on council, so we'll have three majority again, so you can go back after and redo the agenda all over again, and maybe change the wastewater upgrade. Right now, we're on track. This council, in two years, has got a general plan, and we're addressing the wastewater problem. So, you know, you should have been here four years ago, when the prior council didn't do anything. Thank you.
Slaughterback. Fred, the police radios is on consent. Do you want to speak on that now?
Since I couldn't find the access to the staff report, I'm just curious what we're buying, why we're buying them. I know we're on 400 megahertz, these are 800 of these for discussing, or being able to talk to EMS and fire, or... And how much are we, you know, I don't know anything about it, because I couldn't...
Yeah, well, the staff report says it's from a grant. It's grant money. The city's not paying for it. But it is, because we can't talk to anybody in the community, fire department, ambulance, nobody, so, yeah.
So that's what they'll be using, just portable, I mean, just...
They're a car radio.
Mobils, yeah.
Chief, explain a little bit about the tower out by the fire station, how that fits in with the radios.
Yeah, the city negotiated with Sacramento Regional Consortium, the radio consortium, gave them the land in exchange for letting the police department buy into the radio consortium, so saved the city about $200,000 bucks. That's what the buy-in would have cost us. And the fire department really wanted that tower, because their portables weren't working inside the building. And the police department wants to be on the same emergency frequencies with everyone else in the county. So it seemed like good business, and it was...
Yeah, no, that's, I was just wondering what it was...
The radios on this budget are for the car, and they're paid for by a grant that paid for a 10-851 stolen car grant. That's what's paying for it.
Love grants.
That's the last speaker sheet that we have. Is there anyone else that would like to speak before we move on with the rest of the agenda? All right. Just wanted to make a comment. I didn't want to respond to a lot of the verbal attacks in light of the tragedy that took place today. I don't want this to make a forum for attacking each other. I just, I wanted to make one brief comment. There was an allegation that we had called some members of this group liars and lunatics. That never took place. What I did say was that this group is not telling the truth about certain issues. And I don't want to get into great detail about it. I'll just give you one small example. One of the first things that they said in the flyer that many of you read in the newspaper was that, at your very first city council meeting, before you even warmed up your seat, you immediately voted to remove the Delta Greens project. That meeting took place in the middle of January. We were sworn into office in the beginning of December. So that was at least my fourth meeting, and my seat was pretty warmed up before we got to that one. So, I'll just let it die at that. Takes us to the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent calendar.
Second?
Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approve 4-0. Takes us to communications. We have one item under communications tonight, and that is the Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrade Oversight Committee Charter Amendment Request. This time, I'll turn it over to our Public Works Director, Greg Holliday, just for a little bit of background information.
Good evening. This issue was carried over from the last meeting. Back in 2007, council established the Wastewater Treatment Plant Oversight Committee and approved the charter. The main focus of that charter was to assist staff, provide a liaison to the community relative to the methods and the cost efficiency of the upgrade to the treatment plant. Since then, in the meetings, some of the subjects that the committee has discussed or requested staff that they discuss have, in my opinion, gone a little bit astray of what the original charter was. And so, I've requested that the committee come back before the council and officially expand the charter to go into other areas, such as the water meter implementation plan, rate study, low-flow toilets, other things that they've expressed an interest about that aren't really related, in my opinion, to the upgrade of the plant. And so that's what we're here tonight to discuss.
We also have the chairperson of the Oversight Committee here tonight. That's Chairperson Molson. I wanted to make a brief comment real fast. We got a pass-through memo from Greg's office in regards to the attendance at these meetings. There was a lot that was brought up about that at the previous meeting. And I wanted to commend board members Molson, Walters, and Slaughterback for having a perfect attendance record at those meetings. I know this requires a lot of time, and we appreciate the work that the three of them have put in on a continual basis, so... Chairperson Molson, would you like to come up? I think what we were really looking for at the last meeting was just some overall direction and exactly what you guys were asking for, so...
I think I can put that, I think I can give that to you. Anyhow, good evening. A little housekeeping first, since we are covered under the ground act, this committee is. There are three members here in attendance tonight. If that's an issue, I'm sure you'll see the attorney be jumped... you'll see the attorney be jumping up and down. He isn't, so I'll continue. Anyhow, Mr. Mayor and council, the wastewater treatment plant oversight committee, I'm the chairman, and they made a recommendation that we be involved in looking at the rate study prior to an upcoming public workshop. And there's some advantages to doing that. Again, it's your choice, but I'll get into that. And what started this is we actually have a nexus to this rate study, because one of our members was on the interview panel to select a consultant. So that started the discussion. And from there, we found out it's difficult to just pull out the upgrade funding without getting involved with the operations and maintenance aspects of it, filter changes, UV lights, it just, the two relate real quick. And then you also have other capital improvements, too, that start playing into this. So to just pull out the, and focus on the upgrade fees starts getting kind of gray. Then, there's also, there's also discussion, and it may or may not be covered in the rate study, I don't know, we haven't seen it, where the wastewater upgrade fund itself may be going away and be absorbed by the O&amp;M, the existing O&amp;M fund and the capital fund. Again, it starts getting gray when you just start focusing on that one little fee there. So, then you start looking at the water meter implementation. And again, there was discussion with the rate study and different options, that down the road, there may be a recommendation, again, we don't know, we haven't seen the rate study, of tying the sewer fee with the water usage in some way. It makes sense in some cases. Again, we haven't seen the rate study, so we don't know if that's a recommendation or She also mentioned the financing for the upgrade. Now, we're hoping to get the state revolving fund, but we're not sure how we're going to get it. Nobody is at this point. We may end up having to do some bonding first and pay the, get paid back by the revolving fund. Again, you know, we don't know, that's part of what the design consultant is tasked to do, to get us involved with that. And with the way the state financing is right now, who knows? You know, you may do more bonding up front and pay back later. But if you bond, you're going to want to leverage those bonds and not just bond just for the upgrade. You may want to also look at bonding for, put an whole package together to leverage those bonds and put the water meter implementation in there, perhaps some other capital items. Again, it starts getting real gray here to just focus on the upgrade fee. So you see what we get into as a committee. You start going down this road, and real quick, it's like a pinball. You can't go there, you can't go here, you can't go, because it just starts all intertwined. Now, one of the responsibilities of the committee is to communicate with the community on some of these issues. And it's also to ensure the interest, the public interests of the community as represented... Let me see, I'm getting off track here, but let me put it another way. Let's say this committee looked at the rate study prior to the workshop. Now, I'm sure some members will go to that workshop. I was planning on it. Do you think we might have some questions before we get to the workshop, based on this review of the rate study? So when we get to the workshop, it's going to do a couple of things. One is, it'll precipitate some discussion with the other community members that attend. The second thing it'll probably do is it'll probably generate some questions that one or two things will happen. Staff and the consultant will have the answer for you at the workshop, or they won't. Now, if they don't, do you think they're going to have the answer by the time they get here in front of council? You bet. So again, it gives you a better product to make your decision, make your decision on. And that's it in a nutshell. Thank you.
Are there any questions from Mr. Molson, from the rest of the council?
Tom, so are you confident you feel that you need to look and explore further when you're talking about the cost? You want to look more deeper into the study of the fees of water, water fees, et cetera?
Well, no, but you almost have to. You know, it started out focused just with the upgrade, and the more you get into it, the more it starts interrelating with the O&amp;M costs and if you're going to leverage bonding. You know, how do you separate it? And then when you, down the road, it may not happen right away, but I can see by the time you're done with the upgrade, the upgrade fee no longer existing. So somewhere in there, it's going to be combined with the other two funds. Again, how do you start separating that and just focusing your efforts on one area you can't?
It's not, it's not an easy thing to understand, is it?
No.
By any means. And I understand why, you know, for the public is, and that was one of the reasons why the oversight committee was created, so that we would have people from, citizens from the community who would be able to look at this and be able to go out, look and explore other opportunities, but also come to understand what it is that we, you know, we're trying to accomplish. And it has not been an easy task by any means, and you guys have done a great job, and I understand what you're trying to accomplish with this.
Well, you know, again, if we do it right, we probably may not get all the answers, but if we ask the right questions, by the time it gets to council, so you guys can actually make a final decision on it, those answers should be answered. They'll have an answer for you by then.
Okay.
You know, and I think that's the way it should work. So, quite fun. And I know from reviewing the minutes of the last meeting, we've been a little remiss on getting you a annual report. Of course, I didn't look at the charter till last week. So I have put that on our agenda for this month.
Okay.
To start looking at that and getting you some kind of report.
Good. Any comments, Barbara?
No.
Tim? Okay.
Well, thank you.
My only comment would be that we created this group in the beginning to be a transparent oversight committee to help the community see what was actually going on with the upgrade and the funding required to complete the upgrade. And I'm okay with moving forward with the amendment to the charter request from the group.
Mayor?
Sure.
I know it's a little bit late, but I know we have quite a few vendors from the Galt flea market here that have been up for a long time. Is it possible to move their item up?
Well, let's complete this one first, and then, you know, we can move that up afterwards. I think we're close to a resolution here. Do we have a motion in regards to the amendment to the charter of this committee?
Make a motion? Yeah, I'd make a motion to amend the charter to include the study of the cost for water.
So...
And, let's see. Wastewater treatment plant upgrade oversight committee charter amendment request.
So everything that the committee has asked for?
Yes, for the study, so they can look further and deeper into the cost for water fees, et cetera, et cetera.
Everything that the council has asked for? Or the committee has asked for the...
Well, I think they're into...
What council, what Chairperson Molson presented tonight?
Right.
Is that the motion?
Well, I think, that's the motion, because unless there's something else he left out.
I think we need specific details in this motion. All right, so are you suggesting what, that they include the... Well, I mean, Greg, let's...
Mr. Mayor, this is a point of order. The council did adopt a charter, a written charter, that listed seven precise responsibilities for this committee. My recommendation would be that the council provide direction to staff to bring back that amendment to the charter in written form for the next meeting, so that you have actual wording to look at and could act upon that wording, based upon the, any direction that you give to staff this evening.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have some concerns that there'd be, there's various types of information that may come through some of these studies and whatever that should go to the council before they go to them in order to review, and you may want to talk with Greg about what some of those issues may be.
We can have that discussion when we actually bring the amendment back, so... Do we have a motion to have staff bring forward a set of amendments based on the presentation by Chairperson Molson tonight?
Yes. I'd make a motion, we have staff bring it back.
Did we want to hear from another possible speaker before we vote on this?
Mr. Walters?
Rick Walters, and I live in the city of Galt. One of the questions I sent through Liz, did they get the request I sent them? Are you not going to address that at tonight's meeting?
It was a one-page, it got put in the mailbox. I'm trying to think of what it said, Rick, help me out. It requested salary...
Well, they should have got it.
Yeah, they did. They did.
That can be one of the items that we bring forward.
We had a 3-0 vote about the payroll of, this is one of these things where we start looking into things, and it starts leading us into other avenues. And one of the things that I started looking into, because they were talking about joining funds, and I just wanted to know what the payroll was in 2001, and I found out what the payroll was, which is like 279,000. And then you fast forward to today, and it looks like the budget is budgeted for 800,000, so there's a 700, $500,000 increase just in sewer payroll. And so I'm questioning that, and that's one of the requests was that, what I wanted to know was who are the people that are drawing money from payroll for wastewater when there's only six people working in wastewater? I understand you have collections and stuff like that. What are the percentages? Who's collecting it? You have Fund 07, Fund 14, and Fund 15. Are they going to have a maintenance and operation for each one of those funds and a payroll for each one of those funds? These are the things that we start, when we start talking and discussing, these things start leading us into these areas, and it's very hard to say, whoop, we can't go there, don't go there, because it's not part of the upgrade. Well, I mean, these are the things that the oversight's doing, is looking into these things.
Yeah, Rick, we can make sure that that's part of the proposal that comes back before council.
Thank you very much.
If council wants to take it out or leave it in there, it'll all be decided at the next meeting.
Yeah, that just, that went to Liz. That has nothing to do with us. That's just a public record request, right?
Actually, Mr. Walters brought it in and asked that it copy go-to all council members as well.
But doesn't his response is totally separate from us? It's a public record request?
No, that was a response, because my request was denied in committee, so I came to council.
But I can... But we, it, but it also is, I mean, you made a public records request, which we're working on.
You're answering his request?
Yes.
So they're responding to your request?
Okay.
And I can just update council on that briefly. We did, finance received that request for public records, and we just responded this evening, so we have responded to it. But basically, it's just information that is within the budget document. It states that an engineer is allocated to that fund, like Fund 7, Fund 14. It's not by specific name, title, but we're trying to provide what is a readily available document, and that is in the budget, and it actually will say 10% of that position or 50% of that position or 30%. So that, we have made copies. We will be forwarding that to the clerk's office in response to the public records request. It is not name-specific, but title-specific, and the percentage allocation, along with fringe benefits and so forth, for all of those three funds that were mentioned.
Will that request show 10 or 15 people drawing money from payroll?
It will actually give you the name of each position that is allocated, not the person, but the position. It could say a maintenance worker, an engineer, a senior inspector, or it will give you the actual title and the respective percentages of that position allocated to those funds.
For Funds 07, 14, and 15.
That is correct.
Thank you very much.
So that has been copied, and that will be forwarded to the clerk's office. We did respond via email, but the actual hard copies are in route.
So, Mr. Walters, so you should have that request, maybe not tomorrow, but on Thursday. We'll have that ready for you.
I want to thank staff very much. Thank you.
Because that is not part of the upgrade, this 7th fund is not part of the upgrade. The 4th means on as a cap. Only the difference is that we're... So, the committee is asking information that is not relative to the upgrade, and is not appropriate for me to release to them, unless the council then authorizes and expands the preview of this committee into all of these areas.
We already have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote?
What's the motion?
The motion is to have staff come back with a specific list of what would be amending, what would be amended in the charter of the wastewater treatment plant oversight committee.
Okay.
Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approve 4-0. It sounds like Councilwoman Payne would like to move up item I-2 ahead of item I-1. Is council okay with that?
Okay with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So at this time, we'll move under the regular calendar to item I-2, which is under the cultural and recreation department, and that is the hours of operation of the Galt Market. At this time, I'll turn it over to our Parks and Recreation Director, Boyce Jeffries.
And then I think also we were going to include, which is on the closed session agenda, F on page two, which is Galt Market Operations and Enhancements, I believe.
And if there's any other vendors out there that would like to speak under this item that have not turned in a speaker sheet yet, please fill one out and bring it up here.
Now, are you going to, were you going to adjourn now to the special? Because the special deals with everything, not just, the other one deals with hours, but we want to address hours in the special, everything.
At one time?
We want to address it all.
Yeah, all of it, yeah. That's why we added that.
That was my understanding.
Yeah.
Eight, 10. Okay, at this time, we'll adjourn to the special city council meeting, and I'll turn it over once again to our Parks and Recreation Director, Boyce Jeffries.
Andrew, could you just read the agenda item for the audience, so they know? Because they may have gotten a copy of the new agenda.
That is under regular calendar, Galt Market Operations and Enhancements. It is recommended that council discuss and take action as deemed appropriate.
Good evening. As council may recall, back at the August 5th, 2008 council meeting, that council directed staff to come back at a later date for recommendations for enhancements at the Galt Market. This evening, staff is recommending four items. At this time, we will come back with fee adjustments at the November 4th meeting, but at this time, to be effective immediately, is that A, council approve, or one, terminate the one-way traffic on Chabola Avenue during market hours of operations. Approve of used item row R rows on Tuesday market at $15 per space, which is the same fee as Wednesday's market. Hours of operation for market on both Tuesdays and Wednesdays would be set at 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. At this time, I'll turn it over to Amon Dos Lees Market Operations for number four, the recommendation of the redesign and realignment of the market grounds.
Thank you, Mayor and council. One of the things that we've come back with in our enhancements of the market is to possibly create new rest areas and walkways for our patrons to create better traffic flow. We've tried to close certain rows that were empty, and with vendors not liking that and how we've done it, we tried to create a different design to accomplish the same as closing off a whole row. What we did is, at the end of each one of these red marks is gates three and four. We're hoping to create a row that'll go completely through, all the way from A row to L row. Currently, when you walk in the gate, this is what you see. We're hoping to create... We're hoping to create a row to maybe look similar like this. This is just as the market's empty, but put benches, tables, rest areas and walkways right through, all the way to Row L. That would be the first of the design. We would pick either the north or south to do, whichever would be the easiest, and then come in and do the other one, once we figure out the best way to do that. The used area that we were wanting to implement would go in this area. We'd contain it on Tuesdays, so it wouldn't be amongst all the wholesale and retail product. We're hoping to keep it in this area here. Does council have any questions?
None at this time.
Maybe one?
Go ahead.
Amondo, have you discussed this with the vendors? I mean, are they, because what I found when I was out there was the things that we changed or put in unexpectedly affected some of the vendors. I mean, I know the council approved your, like, the blockade that was put up, but we didn't look at it from the perspective of how it would affect the vendor as far as the circulation of the traffic. And what I heard was it did affect their business tremendously. So my first question on this, has this been discussed with the vendors at all?
No, it has not.
Do you think it might be a good idea to discuss it with them before we take action, to get their input?
Well, we could do that, we've done it before, but I don't think it goes to no avail when we do that. Because on the flip side, I talked to some vendors that locked, that liked that row blocked off. It enhanced their business. So it just depends who you talk to about specific issues.
Well, I understand that everyone's going to have a different opinion, but the ones that I talked to were directly affected because of the traffic not flowing. I guess the point I'm trying to make is, I think before we take action, we should get, you know, input from the people there, because we may not think of every way it's going to affect them, but they should know. I mean, immediately, if you cut off their traffic, they're going to know it's going to affect their business. And that would be my, my first thought, that we really need to get a good partnership going with the vendors and listen to, to what they have to say. And I'm not saying that you haven't, but maybe we're just not getting enough input as to the effect of, of the actions that we take until, until they don't like it. And then we have to go back and change it. So I'd rather get their ideas up front.
Let me just intervene for a second, I'll just give you my opinion in the last two years, because Councilman Raboy and I have been working with the vendors in the market. In fact, we've, you know, brought back ideas to invest more money into the market to help enhance it and bring in business. And there's over 800 vendors, correct me if I'm wrong. Amondo, what do we have?
800 spaces, four to 500 vendors.
Four to 500 vendors, I'm sorry, 800 spaces, four to 500 vendors. And I have, in fact, just two months ago, the last time I was out there, I've been out there a couple of times, but the last time I was out there and I spoke to vendors, I got difference of opinions and different thoughts. And we had two meetings, we had one with the Tuesday crew and then we had one with the Wednesday crew. It is almost impossible to get any kind of consensus where everybody will agree. Now, you can get a group here tonight that will agree with, they will disagree with this idea and agree with another. And the minute you come in with your new idea, you're going to have another group in here opposing it. You, it's so difficult to get it, any type of consensus. I've really come to the conclusion, you're not going to make everybody happy, but you're going to have to start treating this more like a real business. And, you know, you can't depend on all your customers to regulate and control your hours and to regulate and control what you can and can't do. And it's no disrespect to any of the vendors, and I appreciate their business, but at some point in time, you've got to start making some decisions on what's best for this, this flea market as a whole. And I think that's very important. And, and again, this, the last two meetings we had with the vendors, there was no consistency. There was, there was disagreement from different sides. You know, it depends if you're a wholesaler versus a retailer, whether you sell used items versus new items, you know, whether you're selling fruit, you're going to get a different answer and you're going to get opposition no matter what ideas you come up with. And I think we're at a point now, because this is a downturn in the economy, it's not just the flea market, it's businesses across the country that are dealing with these issues, this downswing. So we need to make some decisions. And I think by trying to get the input of four to 500 vendors or more and try to get some sort of consensus, by the time you get that done, we're going to be another six, 12 months down the road. And I think we need to be looking at some positive changes that are going to improve this flea market. And this is just my opinion based on my experience. And again, Councilman Raboy and I have met with these groups for the last two years. The most recent two meetings was about, what, two, three months ago? And we also met with the same groups the previous year. So we've been out there, I've talked to vendors, we've been with these. That's where I sit on this, and I, and I think you're going to be hard pressed to get any kind of consensus on any change.
Well, for example, the reason that I was even out there was because I was contacted and asked to come out because of the hours. That was, that was pretty much a consensus of everyone that I spoke to out there, where we changed the hours to close at 3:30. And I listened to what they had to say. They said there was not going to be anybody there after 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock. And, and this was on Tuesday, which is a different market, obviously, than, than Wednesday. And I went back at 2:00 and it was absolutely right. I didn't see more than two customers there, plus the market itself, because so many of the vendors wanted to, to break down and go home. It was chaotic to my mind in the aisles. Some of the vendors had already stacked their things up, they were waiting for an escort to, to get them out. The mannequins were stripped with no clothes, we had mannequins with no clothes. But it just wasn't appealing after 2:00 to any customer that may have, may have come in. And that was one item that I thought was pretty, you know, everyone pretty much agreed that going to 3:30 on, on Tuesday was not a good thing. And Tuesday has, has traditionally been a wholesale day where the wholesalers want to get there early, they want to pick out their merchandise, they want to load it up and get back to their business and get to work. So that, you know, that was one suggestion that I got, that I think, I think the majority of the vendors would have agreed with that staying open till 3:30 was not a good idea. Even if you escort them out at, at 2:00 or whenever. And it, and the Parks and Recs guys were so busy trying to escort these people out that it was, it was hard on them as well, I thought.
Sure.
When, oh, comments done. When we had our meetings with vendors and we brought back the consensus the last few meetings ago, there was consensus in those meetings for what we brought back, but you see, we had all these new vendors come that night and were opposed to it. So that's the problem. We can have all these different meetings and they agree, some vendors will agree with it, and then other vendors didn't show up and then they had a problem with it.
I understand, Tim, but what I'm saying is, I personally observed what they were talking about. You know, that if, if you stay open till 3:30, if you extend the hours to 3:30 on Tuesday, which is traditionally a wholesale day, it looked like it wasn't working for, for anybody. It didn't look like it was working for Parks employees as well as.
I know what you're saying, but there's no one in the community that would have known that we did extend the hours because we didn't advertise it, we didn't tell anybody. But forgetting that idea, I think it's important, we keep coming back to council with all these different ideas for the flea market all these years. I think what makes sense is we give the management of the market the opportunity and the power to make changes as they see fit. Because we're running a business, they need to run the business. They don't need to keep coming back to council to ask about this or ask about that. They just make the decision and they do it. Only thing they should be coming back to us, and I've been dealing with this for eight years, they should be coming back to us for fee increases or fee decreases, if it affects the revenue. Everything else, they should be making the decision on. They should be meeting with the vendors and they should make the final decision. And I've just come to that conclusion over time, because it just doesn't make any sense for us to get bombarded, bombarded with certain people on council days and then other people can't make it and it's not fair to them and those guys are the experts.
Well, let me just make one more comment. What I heard just randomly out there was, things are so bad. And I think you probably heard that too, that possibly by the time Christmas season is over, we may have very few vendors left. I think with that kind of an atmosphere, we need to be treating these vendors like they're our customers. We need to hear from them what they think will help them be successful. You know, if we don't have the vendors, if they don't come, and I heard many of them saying they weren't making any money, then it's, you know, we're not going to have any flea market in the future. And the other thing I heard was, once they leave and quit coming to the flea market as a vendor, it's really hard to get them back. And I had like a list of 10 things that they suggested that were pretty positive. Advertising was one, I think that's a pretty general suggestion that they thought would help them. And I know we also got a big, long letter from one of the vendors.
Well, during the budget session, I, I asked council for approval for a large increase in advertising and I didn't get approval for that. So I agree, we do need more advertising, we need to put up signs on the freeway, but we need to allocate the money to do it.
Wait a second, that issue came up when you and I met with the group. And that's at that time, when we came back and asked for enhancements for the, the market, we increased it to how much, 50,000 a year?
It went up to 50,000.
And prior to that, it was what, 15?
16.
16,000. So it was an issue that was brought to Tim and I when we met with this group, because we took all their ideas and we took the ideas that came from Parks and Recs and we incorporated that into the changes. So that, those are things that we had addressed and, and we went from 16 to 25,000, or 50,000, excuse me, from 16 to 50,000. Would love to have done more, but there wasn't enough support on the council at the time to do that. It's, it's a little bit different animal when you, when you're out there talking to individuals and you're getting opinions. You've got to be able to talk to almost 500 people. When you put these people in a room, you realize, you start to, you can look at and listen to them, their opinions change from one side of the room to the other. And for example, the reason that we took the hours that we did and went to 3:30 was, is that on one half of the room, we had people, correct me if I'm wrong, Amondo. One half of the room, we had people who would like to have closed it at what, 3:00? And the other half, it was 4:00. So we said, would a compromise of 3:30 be reasonable? Okay, so that's what we came to that conclusion. The situation that you're talking about has to do with the days that you were there, most likely was record hot days where it was 100 and some degrees, nobody was coming out, they weren't getting any business and it was too hot to be there. And, and it's always been my understanding is that, Amondo, you have the discretion to close it down and escort people out. Is that not correct?
Not, not close it down, but I will, I will escort people out.
Escort people out and allow them to leave. And that's something that you did. So if those hours aren't working as a result of it, I think we've been doing it for a couple of months. I think Boyce had mentioned something about seasonal hours, because it's so hot during the summer that perhaps it's better to close earlier and then stay open later when it's cooler out. That might be.
No, actually, I think that makes sense. You know, it could cause a little confusion with vendors and customers, but during the summer months, man, that place shuts down between 1:00 and 2:00 o'clock. Then, I know Councilmember Raboy would like to see more state locals take advantage of the market and staying open till 3:30, again, say in the fall or the Christmas season, is a possibility. Again, it relies on the vendors and probably which market day it is in that respect. But I, I'm really, I side with seasonal hours. I think it does make sense, it does give the opportunity, say in the fall, we go to extended hours, to 3:30 or whatever, to give some of our local citizens the advantage of, of going to the market, you know, after school, after their children get out of school.
Right, and I agree with that.
I remember quite some time ago, we, we appointed a council subcommittee, and that was Councilmember Raboy and Vice Mayor Haynes to work on these issues. And I'm just, I'm trying to understand why this subcommittee came back to council and made recommendations and now we've got another council member that's out there soliciting input from vendors and trying to bring back a totally different platform.
Actually, I'm just trying to bring back what they told me. And I was asked to come out there because they said they, they hadn't been heard before. And I don't mean that against him and, and Don, because I know that you've had meetings. But the other thing, I think the economy is getting more difficult every day and we have to be flexible and address the economy as it changes. You know, we can argue about this, but the bottom line is, if we end up with no vendors, we're not going to have a Galt Market. And I don't think any of us want that. I think it's beneficial to the city, it helps support our parks. I've, I've always believed that we should be treating them as, as customers and, and trying to accommodate their needs. And not saying that I don't think that we are, but now I'm hearing some new things and I, I think we all listen to them, but that's my opinion.
Could we hear some comments from the vendors?
Yes.
Our first speaker is Virginia Para. Virginia Para?
She may have left.
Rodney Stanhope?
I actually want to address something Don said, that you guys held meetings and could not get a consensus from us vendors. What I'm getting from the vendors I've been talking to, and I'm out there every day, every Tuesday and every Wednesday, is the fact that there was no reason for them to get, give consensus. We're up at 4:00 in the morning, I've been up since 4:00 a.m. this morning and I'm staying until I can get this meeting done, because it's important to me, because it's my business and it's my livelihood. I guarantee you, if you focus on the 20% we agree on and move onward from there, as opposed to starting with the 80% we disagree on, you'd have a whole different result. I know for a fact I can get you consensus from those vendors. I know them, I work with them. We can come up with our own. You guys are making decisions and you've never walked in our shoes, you've never lived in our life. You've never gotten up at 4:00 in the morning, come out to a flea market and have no people there to sell to, and then you've got to go back home and count your sorrows and then do it again the next day and then do whatever else you do. And then you've got to input your money into product, because you've got to have product to sell and stuff like this. You know, in the last five weeks, and I do correct you, the temperatures not hit over 100 on any Tuesday at the flea market in the last five weeks. We had 87 degrees, 93 degrees, 91, 89, and 87. I came out with a Tuesday loss the first week of negative $45, I made no sales. I made $5 profit the next Tuesday. I lost 10 bucks the following Tuesday, I made a whopping 60 bucks the next week and I made 40 more dollars this week, that was today. It's pathetic, anybody in their smart mind that runs a business that way would pretty much want to quit. I believe in the fellow vendors and I believe in my Galt Flea Market. And I believe that there's things that can be done, that we vendors, let us make decisions. We can come to a consensus, I guarantee it, if we're given a chance. Separating the booths, every other space between a vendor will spread them out. I do home and garden shows for a living, I've been doing it for 18 years. I know how professional companies run home and garden shows and county and state fairs across this country. And what they do is spread the vendors out to make it look like there's more people, as opposed to blocking off the entire center of the flea market like they did right now, which had a huge detrimental impact to some major vendors there and over 50% of their business dropped. I think you need an advisory council. We vendors can come to you or to you and actually give you our opinion. We will go out and talk to the other vendors. We will bring you consensus. If you want signatures from the vendors, I'll bring them to you, I will get them. If you want a two-thirds majority, I can get it for you. These guys care about the market, it's our livelihood, it's what we want to do. Layout redesign, space cost reduction. Right now, today, you had about 170 vendors there paying 40 to $45 for a booth space. You could get more than that. Reduce the fees. I do, as one example only, it's called the DMG Company. I do five home and garden shows in the Bay Area with them. If I chose to do one show, it's $1,300 for booth space. They make me a deal, I book all five, they charge me $850. They've given me a serious reason to guarantee them my business. You give these vendors a serious reason to guarantee their business, I will pay three, six, nine, even up to a year in advance if you drop the booth rates and I will always be there. But I can't afford to keep coming there with the money we're losing right now.
I have a quick, quick question for you, Mr. Stanhope.
Yep.
We got a couple of emails in the last month where vendors had made reference to the parking fees being imposed a little over two years ago. They said that that was really the catalyst for the downfall of the market. Is that what you've observed as well?
The parking fees, yeah, that, that really pissed off a lot of, that pissed off a lot of customers and got the customers mad. But from, from there, you've lost a lot of vendors because they can't afford to keep coming here and bringing in their wares. You know, it's just, what I'm hearing is, they don't, they don't listen, they don't care. If I'm up at 4:00 in the morning, I'm not going to come to your guys'. If I'm up at four o'clock in the morning, I'm not gonna come to your guys' meeting, because you're not gonna listen to me anyway. You gotta give them a reason to believe that their voice actually matters, so...
So, going back to the free parking was a good decision?
Yes, absolutely. Going back to free parking was a good decision. I think that redesigning...
Shade structures, has that worked out well, you think?
The shade structures down the middle where the food vendors are was great, because it put some traffic areas in a place for people to get out of the sun and sit down and enjoy the food. I think also, if you put that same shade structure down by where the produce vendors are, you might get a little more traffic down there. I like, whoops, picture's gone, I like the cut across where you've got the extra two aisles, because that's what, that's what we do with the home shows. You've always got three cut across. It'll create traffic flow without blocking it off.
Right.
I do like that idea.
One of the things I hate about going to the market is having to walk all the way down each long aisle just to get to the middle section again. And I think that this is a good plan here, to subdivide it like you're talking about.
That's fine, yeah.
What I'm trying to illustrate is...
If you subdivide it that way, there's pros and cons. If you subdivide it that way, it leaves it up to me to make my booth appealing to you.
Right.
But you let me do my job, and I will draw the vendors in, or the customers in.
What I'm trying to illustrate, though, with the discussion about the elimination of the parking fees, the shade structure improvements, the fact that we've allocated more money in the budget to advertising, we're taking steps to try to help the flea market that haven't been taken in the past. And I really feel like there's a lot of negative attention being cast upon the fact that the market is kind of declining, but really, we're investing money, we're investing time into making it better. Now, I understand your opinion that you think that maybe our attention has been allocated in the wrong direction, but we've put together these meetings with vendors, and, you know, the five of us assume that when we put out a public meeting and we ask the vendors to attend, we assume that we're getting a majority response. Now, I wasn't at any of these meetings, so I'll have to take your word for it. But, what we really need to do is get the vendors involved in those public meetings where we're talking, we're trying to come to a middle ground where everybody can benefit. When we bring a change forward like we did at the last two council meetings, we get the people that don't want it to happen. The people that wanted it maybe assumed that it was just gonna pass anyways and decided not to come here on a Tuesday night when they woke up at four-thirty, like you did today.
Well, even with today's meeting, tonight, we found out about it this morning. So, some of these vendors simply can't stay for the meeting, otherwise they'd be here. But, you know, coming down there and communicating with them that their opinion does matter, and that you wanna talk to them. If you wanna meet with most of them, getting them in a room at six PM at night on a Tuesday will probably be a very difficult thing. Come down to the market and talk with us.
Their opinion has always mattered, and that's the reason that the changes have occurred in the last two years, that that happened. And there's been a lot of progress, and as again, the downturn of the economy has hit everybody, and we're trying to make every positive decision we can to improve the market, as you yourself have agreed, this is a good idea. How long have you been working at this market?
Oh, geez, on and off since nineteen ninety-one.
How often recently have you been there consistently?
Oh, well, right now, we're in the middle of the fair season. I was there from right after January all the way through the fair season started again, so it's been sporadic for me, but that's because...
When you say sporadic, I'm sorry, so have you been there consistently for the last year by chance?
Two out of four weeks a month.
Two out of four weeks in the last month, or in last year. See, the thing of it is, is, you know, down season right now, and eventually here, you know, if you've been there long enough, you know that the market's going to be picking up, the economy, things tend to improve at the market here soon. So, there's gonna be an upswing to it. So, the idea is to make some changes now, so that everybody in there can benefit from it as the market improves.
Well, we Tuesday wholesale vendors definitely don't want used people, and that's what Wednesday's for. And in terms of the downturn in the economy, assuming that we're in a downturn of economy, and you're a hundred percent right on the point, if I'm looking for a bargain to save my family money, I know that I can come to the galt flea market, buy products, and save money. It's kinda like the difference between going to Bel Air and then all of a sudden you start shopping at Walmart. It makes more sense for people to buy stuff at the flea market when it's on wholesale price, because it's at a cheaper price and you can buy it outside the market. So, if I am in a bad economy and I'm in a bad time and I wanna save my family money, I wanna go to the flea market and find out what kinda deals I can get, but they're still not coming, because there's not enough vendors there, because they're gone. We can bring them back.
Do you know how many spaces we had vacant today?
Well, there's eight hundred spaces. We only had, what, a hundred and seventy vendors today, something?
We were eighty-two percent full.
Okay.
We were eighty-two percent full.
When you say full, Mondo, does that mean the spaces were occupied, or that they were paid for?
They were paid for, yeah.
So, and, yeah, there were some maybe that paid for them, but they were still vacant. So, to the customer that's coming out there, it looks kinda sparse.
Yeah. Well, plus the way they're spread out, I mean, walking down my aisle, there's huge holes. And so, if I'm a customer, I'm gonna look down and walk the other way.
Rodney, you feel this plan that's sitting up there, I think you've agreed that you feel that that would be something that would...
Good, good.
Yeah, so, but you, but again, you like most of it, but there's a part of it you don't like.
Well, I think if you spread the vendors out a little bit with spaces between them, you're gonna open up the market. Right now, you have huge blocked-out holes in the market. That's terrible for traffic flow. But again, you know, going back to two o'clock, because on Tuesdays, we don't make any money after about one or two o'clock.
Right.
And also, if you want to talk to the vendors, put some of us together to be the spokesman for you. We will get you consensus. It's our livelihood, it's in our best interest.
Question for you, Rodney. Tell me why you're opposed to the used vendors?
Because I think we could do better on Tuesdays, bringing back more wholesale vendors and promoting to the businesses in this town that this is a place to come shopping for your wholesale store merchandise. I went up and met with some guys, the guy has an urban store in downtown Plaza, and met with him and said, you know, you can be getting your merchandise there wholesale. I know the guy, but I told him, I said, why aren't you buying there? He actually came down and found one of the vendors that carries some of the clothing he likes to sell in his store. And it was a better price than he was getting by having it shipped from New York and stuff like that. And he didn't even know that we had it. But, advertise to these people, come and give us a shot.
When we met with the vendors, those Tuesday vendors, there was a few vendors that had opposed, correct me if I'm wrong, Boyce and Mondo, that opposed adding more used, but most of them seemed to support that.
It was mixed like all the other issues, it was a mixed issue.
I have to share with you, I spoke to a customer that came from San Francisco, and another man, and he said, he was very happy with the market. He said, he loved staying at the new Best Western, it's a great place to stay, but he said he thought the market was starting to look more junky, and he listened to what we were talking about, and he was opposed to having more garage sale stuff there. And the point he made was, he can go to a garage sale anywhere, but when he comes to the flea market, it's more of an adventure or something. That was his words.
Thank you, Mr. Stanhope.
Thank you. May I just address one issue?
Sure.
And, we're being the only own and operated flea market in the state, there are certain rules and regulations that we have to follow. I don't have at my discretion to, hey, you know what, go ahead and fill out a little bit more. I cannot do that within the rules and regulations. I cannot give out free spaces. I cannot do a lot of the things that a private owner of a market can do. Just want you to know that it's not that we're not willing to try and fill this spot. We can't, and we have auditors that come in and audit our process to make sure that spaces aren't given away for free, and spread out, and those type of things.
Briefly, yes, all right. I wasn't suggesting doing the, they do that at the home shows. Here, we didn't sell it, so spread it out some. I'm not asking to do that. I don't want that, because it sets a really bad precedent. No, what I'm saying is actually block out, where you've got a vendor that has twenty feet, make the next space unavailable, and then the next vendor, and then a space unavailable, and the next vendor. And if you map it out that way, it's gonna spread everybody out and fill the whole market. So, it's unavailable, it's not for you to spread out into. Because I actually, I prefer that, too. It gives me visibility from the sides, because some of these vendors bring their walls all the way out. I'd love to have a space on the side of me where I can, nobody's at. Spreads us out, gives us more visibility, we're happier, we can flash our booth out, more they call it, make it look better. So, I'm not saying let people spread out and expand their stuff, that's a no-no, so...
I would just like to add, if you recall, a while back, we implemented produce on Tuesdays, there was some hesitation, even some vendors who I spoke to, but that's turned out to be a success. Why we're recommending and implementing used items, we don't have the wholesale vendors to occupy those spaces. We truly believe we can fill those spaces with used items. Yes, there was some hesitation on some of the wholesalers, and as Councilmember Payne said, to bring those type of items on a Tuesday market, but if we're gonna run this like a business, just like you have a rental house, you know, if you can't get your twelve hundred dollars, hey, let's go down to a thousand. So, that's what we're trying to do, fill the spaces and bring that in.
Okay, Richard Chung?
My name is Richard Chung, sorry, my voice is so husky.
It's okay.
I've been vendor at the galt flea market from nineteen ninety-one. Also, I'm the one who you say the wholesalers. I'm wholesalers, I have six space in the Tuesday market, I pay more than a thousand dollars for the land stay. Maybe I say the different story than what you hear than before. Actually, they're movement, but we don't care. First, any style change, we appreciate Mondo's effort, because he tried to save the market.
Right.
I'm wholesalers. My customer came from out of state. Also, they wanna order, and why they come down here, for take a look, instead of the, take a see the catalog, instead of the something. Why they came down to this flea market, because the whole items putting together, instead of they go to down there, the alley, instead of they go down to the other side, because we put together. My area, few vendors are wholesalers, we are performing as wholesalers. Also, still, I stand as strong to as wholesalers. Many people buy from me, and then they sell at the same day as a retailer, cheaper than retail price. So, then they call, they are wholesaler too, but actually originally, they buy from us, and then they sell at the same day, same market. This market is not, their acting's wrong, is not you guys' wrong, because economic problem, that's why market's down. As Barbara says, we hate to stay by three-thirty. Why? Our customer came earlier, they buy the stuff earlier, and they go back, their store have to open on time. That's the most vendors come, most our customers come here and purchase their product, and they go back to store earlier. There's a nearby area, mostly Stockton, Rodai, and Sacramento, some customer came from the San Jose and San Francisco. But, our big customer is, all came from the out of state. Many times, they asking us, where is your website? They wanna order, and then they come and take a look at the stuff, and they just wanna pick it up, because they are busy. May you saw that some customer came to with the trailer, sleep overnight from the Monday, why they came from the Washington and the Nevada other states? Because this galt flea market, especially Tuesday, we built it as wholesalers. Actually, I proud of that. Maybe you don't know, in the, I went to the Shanghai in China, they knew the this galt flea market, too. When we go to there, we can see the wholesale vendor face each other at the China. We importing, not all of them, but we importing directly from the China. That's why we can build the this flea market strongly. But this times, that happening is the economic problem, not any other problem. So, we have to wait, keep impatient, then we have to shrink a strong mind to stand it, to make it. You, actually, you increase a little price, the fee, I'm willing to pay, because if you want, I can stand it. I can spend less money, then I can make it galt market stronger stand. I know how important this income for the galt city of galt is very important, for the keeping the galt city. I knew that. I've been galt resident as seven years. My children graduate elementary school and middle school at the galt. And then they grow up, that's why I move out to their club. But still, this is my life, not power life, this is my life. So, I'm going to die at this market with the business. So, any kind of action thing. I write on many things to complain, actually, but this many stuff, I'm going to talk to Mondo later, I'm not talking to here. Just this adjustment, any kind of stuff, I appreciate, I'm willing to cooperate with that. Because this every problem is the economic problem, we have to understand, not only galt, or, I already talk with China, I already talk with Korea, everywhere in the world, same. We see yesterday what happened at the Wall Street. That, it is not just our flea market's problem.
Mr. Chung?
Yeah.
Can you wrap it up quickly, please?
Yeah, okay, sorry.
Mr. Chung, question for you. So, do you support adding the used vendors, or you don't support that?
This?
Yes.
Any kind of situation, I willing to cooperate.
So, even though it could change the market a little in your wholesale vendor, you still support it, because we're hoping to make it better?
Because even if they change it like that, my customer going to come to me, they need my merchandise to their business. And then, finally, I wanna talk one more things. We need some more professional management for the market. Actually, I trust his job, Mondo, but this adjustment, I never heard before, actually. And then, three-thirty, three-thirty closing the hours, I didn't hear any happen like that, because suddenly pop out some things, suddenly it's gone like a fall. Many things happening is gone, and then there is a lot of violation of the regulation city of galt flea market. You know, this flea market, why famous in the China, because this galt flea market is one of the base, the spread of fake merchandise. You didn't know that, but they are very smart. They know when the marshal come to catch them.
We probably don't wanna hear about this.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wanna, one thing the fair, Monday night, the many vendors stayed overnight. I pay, yeah, I pay the overnight fee, even if I use it or place not.
Chung, your five minutes are up. Thank you very much. Oh, wait a minute, let me ask him a question. One of the things I heard, and I think this would be helpful to the staff, was if you come a Monday night, the bathrooms are all locked up except for one in the park. And, do you know, is that what you find true?
Once I find it. Yesterday it was opening.
Okay.
Yesterday it was open. And then, can I talk one more, wait a second? For the Monday night over fee, actually, the many vendor do the business on the Monday night. I think it's not fair. I said, I didn't sell, I didn't do anything at the Monday night, but this galt market try to fee for the, doing the business, should be galt flea market have to charge it for the Monday, they have to pay for their extra business. Then, it's fair, they make extra money at the Monday night, they should be paid for that. This is a negative job, the galt stuff, and the city of galt lose the money from that income.
Thank you for that information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chung.
Oscar Valencia?
Hi, I'm here to speak about the used items. I sell on Wednesdays here in Delta, and I know that if you let us sell on Tuesdays, what's it gonna be pretty good, because a lot of people go and sell, and turn look, they'll be coming over here in order to save some money on gas, so we can actually take some of their customers and bring them over here.
So, turn lock is every Tuesday?
Yeah.
Used only?
And there's a lot of other markets that can save money on gas by coming over here on Tuesday. So, that... So that, you know, that's a lot of increase of revenue. Plus, I also like to say that they bring antiques and collectibles as a special section that also help a lot. That's all I want to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was our last speaker sheet. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, we'll turn it over to council comments. Raise your hands.
Well, Councilmember Raboy and I have been working on this for two years, like I've indicated. We've brought back ideas to council, we've done a lot of improvements. As you've already heard, we've increased the marketing from 16 to $50,000, done enhancements to it. We've seen some various changes out there. You know, the economy, like I've said, it's rough, it's rough all over. We've got to make change according to the needs of the market. And even as you heard tonight, there's not even a consensus among those who spoke in some areas. So it's very difficult. I think we're going to have to depend, or we need to depend on Armando to manage this. That's not to say we shouldn't listen to the vendors, their needs. They should still continuously giving in input and ideas and what needs some improvements that could be made so he can, you know, as this market evolves, that he can make those type of changes. We've come a long way in the last two years and this market is very valuable to the city of Galt and that's why we've invested so much time and money into it at this point. And we need to continue doing just that. And it's going to, we're going to continue to see more changes as needed. I support what Armando's presenting with us tonight. I've already had the luxury of seeing this and having sat with him and gone over this. These are some positive changes and you've heard people who agree with it. They don't agree with all of it, but that's the, that's what you get. You're never going to get a consensus. And it's very easy to go out and talk to these vendors. I've done it myself on a couple of occasions. It's completely different what you get when you sit and speak to them one-on-one versus putting them all in a room and you get completely different opinions and that's just the way it is. But you, we do want to get their input and we do want to hear from them, but we've got to make some decisions and we're going to have to make the best decisions we can and we're going to have to move forward with them. And we can't second guess ourselves and continuously go back and go back and trying to get another person's opinion. You're talking about 500 different vendors and it's just very difficult unless, you know, you get a good proportion number of them, not all of them participate, so, and that, that makes it even more difficult. And that's, that's basically all I have to say. Thank you. And I want to say, Armando, you've done a very excellent, good excellent job because you've brought a lot of good ideas to this market and it's still evolving and it's improving. And I support what you've brought today and I, and I hope you continue to do it. And I assume that a lot of these changes are from some of the input you've received from the vendors as well. Is that the case? Some of the changes you've made?
Yeah, we taken to consideration some of the likes and dislikes of some of the vendors.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Payne?
Quickly, a few things that I'm going to share with you. One of the things they said is call it a flea market, don't call it a Galt market. Flea market denotes something interesting, something different. If you call it a Galt market, it sounds like a supermarket. So they want to be called the flea market. Let's make a deal on the spaces. That was just a suggestion, you know, you get, you go down and you buy two things, maybe you get one free. If you get two spaces, maybe get a discount. Times are bad, we need to help them through these bad times if we want to have them stay with us. Bathroom toilets seem to be a problem. Our new toilets seem to be overflowing constantly. The floor is somewhat stained. And I think the park people are, are standing there, not standing there, but they're addressing it as quickly as they can. And I don't know if it's in the design, but I went and looked at the toilet, the hole in the bottom is so small that I can see why maybe it would get plugged up. That was just my observation, but that was something I heard from the vendors and from a couple of the customers. Advertising, it was suggestion that we try to get a list of the mom and pop stores within a radius of 50 miles or so and send some advertising directly to them to come back and buy from the wholesalers. They would like to have a billboard on the highway to show that we do have a flea market. Shrink the market from the outside in using the blank areas for maybe some of the trucks could come in to park inside the area and then that would get them off the street. Send the mailing to the old customers, I don't know, I think we may have tried that before, but that was also suggestion. Another one I thought was interesting, a new vendor I talked to today said he came yesterday to try to reserve a space and was told he couldn't reserve it till this morning, which didn't make any sense to him because he could see how many vacancies there were. So that was something I'm just going to throw out to you. Again, I, I think it would be a good thing. I've always believed that if you're going to have customers, you want to hear what they, what they have to say. And I think the vendors are our customers and we should have some kind of advisory group that we could go to. I think it would, it would make the whole process a lot easier instead of trying to get vendors to stay till 7 o'clock to get their opinion. I think if it was an ongoing thing, it would be easier on the staff as opposed to having big, big meetings. New hours must go, that was what I heard pretty consistently. And again, treat the flea market vendors as customers. That was the input that I pretty much got.
Councilwoman Raboy?
Appreciate all the vendors coming out today. Some of the comments that I've been hearing obviously now and based on we had our meetings was reduction in fees and, and staff already said they're coming back in about a month for a reduction in fees for the Wednesday market, which needs to happen. The billboard we've been talking about for about a year now, we talked about it at our budget hearing and council knows the importance of that billboard. Boyce told me there's a billboard connected to the mobile home, the place that sells mobile homes. Did you guys check into that?
Yes, he has a, it's a corporate billboard and he's checking with them now.
Because that would be nice, it would be, it's right before C Street, so you could see that billboard and we wouldn't have a problem with Caltrans and then hopefully the people would get off at C Street and come to the market. So hopefully we'll see that coming back to the council. Obviously, the vendors are asking for more market, more market and more often meetings with, with staff. So we almost, it almost makes sense to have, say, a quarterly meeting or something where it's a set time and the vendors know, okay, every quarter we have a market meeting or something like that. And then for Armando is dedicating, this is what I'm hearing, dedicating a certain amount of time each day to walk the market and talk to vendors. And it's just a set thing where, okay, Tuesday I know I'm going to walk for an hour or Wednesday for an hour and it's just part of your day and you allocate your time and just plan for it and just listen to the, to the vendors, their comments. The other thing was what I said in the beginning of meeting, I'm hoping, I agree with these changes. I think, I think it's going to fill up the market by pushing the vendors both ways, both on the top and on the bottom, and I'd like to see the used. But I still think we need to give the control back to management and let them make these decisions without us. People can still talk to us and let us know what they feel, but they should be running this market and they should be making the decisions and it's, it's a long time coming. And then we make the decisions on, on increases, fee increases. So I'm hoping council is going to agree to that. That's it.
Right. I'm just going to go down the list of the recommendations by staff that we have tonight. The first one was to terminate the one-way traffic on Chipola Avenue during market hours of operation. I think this is going to have a great impact on the way that traffic circulates into the parking spaces. So I'm in favor of that. The second item is to approve of used item rows on Tuesday market at $15 per space. I also agree with this. I think that we've heard discussion from some of the vendors tonight about different ideas to make the market look full. And if our intent is to actually make the market look full, I think it's great to try the used items to see if we can actually sell the spaces. The third item is the hours of operation for the market. It does sound like the extended hours didn't go over as well as we had planned with the market vendors. So if that seems to be the general consensus of the group, which based on the mass exodus in the last two weeks, it seems that that's the general consensus. So I'm okay with going back to the 2:00 PM market hours. And the fourth is the approval of the redesign, realignment of the market grounds and that was the, that was the actual map that we had looked at previously. I agree with all of the comments that have already been made. I think that this will break down the market, make it easier for pedestrians and customers to flow through there, which could potentially impact the businesses in a positive way. So I'm in favor of that. I also wanted to touch on briefly what Councilmember Raboy had stated. I think that in the last six months, we've reached a dangerous territory in regards to trying to micromanage the way that the flea market operates. I think the five of us as a whole need to remember that we have full-time staff members that are trained to do this, that we pay to do this, and there's a lag time when items get brought back to council. So we need to have the power there with our management group to make these command decisions on the fly to help the market run smoothly. So I'm in favor of, of what Councilmember Raboy had suggested and that is only bringing back changes that fee increases and major changes to the market and allowing the day-to-day operational changes to fall back on Armando. Do we have a motion from council?
All right, I'll make a motion. Let me just go over this to, just, the motion I'm going to make, I want to make sure it's clear. What's that?
There's the recommendations.
Okay, I want to, well, I want to go with the staff's recommendation in addition to that, that staff has pretty much control of the market with the exception of any major changes and/or adjustments of fees.
Fee adjustments.
Fee adjustments.
What's a major change?
Day-to-day operation.
Day-to-day operation.
Well, they said major changes and any fee adjustments.
A major change would be a major change, something really big.
Hours of operation, parking fees, things like that.
Yeah. I wouldn't even say hours of operation. Those guys can decide, it's springtime, we're going to extend the hours.
Seasonal, I think that's something you should try. I think you were right on the money with that, but.
Well, we'll just let Armando use his discretion.
And that's my.
I'll second that motion.
Call for the vote.
Aye.
Would you repeat the motion? It got kind of lengthy there at the end.
Make a motion that council accepts staff's recommendations that they have there in addition to it. The recommendation is to allow Armando to make changes with the exception of adjustments in fees and/or any major changes that might affect the market financially.
Call for the vote?
Aye.
I'll go along with it. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, approved 4-0. Again, thank you to the, all the vendors that came out tonight to speak. Your input is greatly appreciated.
Mayor, let me make one comment. Hopefully I didn't vote wrong on this, but if any, if I have any input that I get from the vendors, just as I have any input from the citizens of Galt, I do intend to bring it back. So if I voted that I'm not going to do it.
No, we said, council can bring back things at any time and discussion, but we're letting the market people run the market.
Well, if the council hears things too, it'd be very effective to bring that to the staff first and let them see if there's things that they can address. And if need be, then it could come back to council. But there's a lot of things that you hear that they could, we could address at a staff level.
And I would like to clarify that the first thing I did after I was out at the flea market was call Armando, went there first.
Right, at this time we will adjourn to our regular meeting. And I believe we've already covered item two, which was the hours of operation that was wrapped up in the item that we talked about under the special meeting. So we'll go back to item number one, which was under the city manager's office, and that is the annual grant report. At this time, I'll turn the floor over to our assistant city manager, Jason Bearman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. A couple of years ago.
Can you hold on a second?
Sure.
Tim or Don, one of you guys has to stay here.
Need to have a quorum.
Okay, we're back.
All right, go ahead. A couple of years ago, the council was very interested in staff pursuing grant funding and made it a priority that staff pursue all available grant funding as much as we could and asked that we bring back an annual report on the grants that we applied for and the success that we had had in receiving those grants and the money that we would be able to bring back into the community. I'm pleased to report that the staff was very active over the last fiscal year, 2007, 2008. We applied for 18 different grants. We received over $10.4 million in total grant funding in the last year alone. Over 9.1 million of that was, that was competitive grant funding, where we had to apply, we competed against other agencies and cities. Largest portion, there's a couple of, of large ones in there that make up the majority of that. One was the $8 million we received from the Centrical Interchange through SECOG. The other one is the Safe Routes to Schools grant that we received, which was, I believe, about $462,000, $470,000 for that. And then there were a number of other smaller grants that we received. The one, one that's not on here because it's, it happened in this fiscal year that the chief reported on earlier, it's a grant we recently received for the 800 megahertz radios. That's another one that will be reported on next year, but staff is very active. In addition to the ones mentioned on here, there are a lot of grants that we evaluate, investigate and determine whether or not the city's eligible, whether we have projects that would be eligible and so forth. And we may not actually apply for the grants, they wouldn't go on here, but we evaluate dozens of, of grants every year. So I think the council should be pleased, the community should be pleased that, that the city was able to bring in over $10 million in outside funding into this community in the last year.
Jason, let me make a comment, a public comment. There was an individual talked about the C Street interchange and whether or not there was enough money or not. If that individual would have attended the budget hearings in the CIP project at the beginning of the year, he would be aware that the project is almost 100% fully funded. As a matter of fact, the construction drawings are being done as we speak and sometime next year, we will actually award that contract and will be under construction. Another one indicated in regards to using money for a study for the wastewater plant, that we did a feasibility study and we studied 17 different options. What, what wasn't said was, is at the end of the 17 options, the consultant came back and saved us almost $15 million in the construction of the wastewater plant by choosing the right scenario in order for us to move forward. And sometimes when people come up at the front, they don't get all that information.
Anything else? Action recommended, just report to the council and any questions the council might have, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
No questions.
All right, thank you, Jason. This time we'll adjourn to the redevelopment agency. Liz, would you please conduct the roll call?
Board members, Hayne?
Here.
Hayne?
Here.
Claire?
Raboy?
Meredith?
Here. We have a motion on the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion, sit down as it is, excuse me.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 Aye, approved 4-0. This time we'll adjourn and reconvene to the Galt City Council. City clerks report.
Just a couple of reminders. September 18th, the beautification committee meeting at 3:30 in the City Hall Community Room. On September 25th, the Commission on Aging meeting at 5:15 in the California Room at the Parks and Rec Department. On October 5th, the Park Master Plan Update Ad Hoc Committee meeting at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. October 6th will be the Galt City Council Youth Committee meeting, 6:00 PM, City Hall Community Room. And that takes us to our next council meeting, but one other reminder, on October 20th, the Water Meter Implementation Plan meeting, 6:00 PM in the Police Department Community Room. Thank you.
You know, we forgot to talk about one thing about the market. We forgot to talk about the graffiti.
You're right.
You'll have to bring it back, I guess, if the next meeting agendized it under your comments.
Yeah, Boyce and Armando are gone.
Hey, Boyce, are you still out there?
I just heard a door close.
He's running.
Never mind, Boyce.
We forgot, no, no, we forgot to address the graffiti, which you sent us emails on and.
And we've had some.
We really need to address that.
Let me get Armando too.
Okay.
We need to address that.
No, no, I agree, we do.
Well, the problem is we don't have it agendized tonight, so.
It was part of that item.
It wasn't part of staff's recommendation.
No, but we had emails on it and it was supposed to be addressed under that item. Is there a problem, Mr. Attorney? I, no, it was agendized under that.
There's not a written, Tim, there's not a written.
I agree, but it was a broad item and that's how we set it up. We set it up broad so we could address all that.
All issues dealing with the. All issues dealing with the flea market, right?
Specifically why I worded it that way.
No, but where there's an action and a requirement of some action, you have to identify what it is you're gonna have them do. There's nothing in there that says anything about graffiti.
I agree, but it's a very general...
The attorney rule, it's up to him.
I mean, Galt market operations is a broad term. To the extent that the graffiti is under that, under that, under operations, then I think it's appropriate for the council to discuss it tonight if you desire.
Thank you. Armando or Boyce, could you mention some of the comments we've gotten regarding the graffiti? And we previously received copies of pictures of trucks and things like that.
A while back, I, in fact, I think it was Councilmember Barbara Payne, over a year ago, was, had a concern about trucks entering the market with graffiti. And at that time, I can't recall all the specifics, and I'll turn it over to Armando here. He can give you the specific history on it. But at one time, and it's probably been a few different, a few different times where we would provide spray paint for the vendors, and that they would spray, spray paint, and I think that also for a period of time until we had a concern about our vendors, that it was required that they would remove the graffiti prior to entering the market. But at this time, I'd like to turn over to Armando, and he can go over the rules and regs regarding graffiti on vehicles.
Councilwoman Payne had brought this item up, I believe, two years ago. And we had Tom Gibson, our attorney at the time, review a ordinance to add to our rules and regulations to address this. And we added it to our rules and regulation, and it is under page five, under violations of a second degree. And what he did is he called it a failure to maintain vendor's property in a clean and neat condition while on market grounds. Those are the warnings that the attorney had given us. What we do is, we have a person that goes around and checks for violations of rules and regulations, checks for open spaces, and he checks the vehicles at that time, and he checks the vehicles on the grounds. I think one of the issues is, not the vehicles that are on the grounds, but the vehicles that are parked in the streets. We do address this. I've spoke to my person who has this job, and when they request, we do give them spray paint and spray over the graffiti. Or allow them to come back the next week and haven't done themselves.
So if a truck drives in and it's covered with graffiti, you'll ask them, well, can we spray it? If they say no, then what?
No, we check on Tuesday, once the market's going. We have somebody that walks the ground to check.
Oh, you're saying if it's parked in the market?
Right, if it's parked in the market on Tuesday or Wednesday during the operation hours, we check it then.
I think the complaint that we were getting was, the trucks are full of graffiti, they come in, they drop off their stuff, and then they park on the street. And they're asking, well, what can be done about it? And I think Barbara in the past was asking about code enforcement and things like that. I don't know if we got a final answer.
The only thing I remember was, we had to be careful of violating the First Amendment, which seemed kind of strange when we don't allow graffiti, you know, on buildings and things throughout the city. But if they put it on their truck, and I think our city attorney could address it. But that was what I heard, and that really, the only jurisdiction we had was when it came on to the market grounds, yeah.
Have you had a chance to look at our new graffiti ordinance?
Um, no, I wasn't aware that this was coming up.
Yeah, we adjusted that six months ago and...
I was under the impression that the vehicles parked on the street would fall under the graffiti ordinance.
Well, I guess...
It'd be good.
I guess maybe we should bring this back now, and maybe the city attorney could look at our ordinance and see if that would address that, and if not, then we would address it maybe with staff, helping them paint their truck real quick as they're dropping stuff off, something to that effect, because it does make the community look really bad.
Just for your information, it's under section two, letter W, the rule.
Lauren, did you wanna, do you have any comments on the graffiti ordinance, if that would affect that issue?
Yeah, my recollection is, it's covered under the new ordinance. There is a section that we modeled based on Stockton's ordinance that said, vehicles parked on public property that are tagged can be, you know, the city can take action against those vehicles. We got a complaint last week, we went out there, there wasn't any vehicle, we drove up and down the street. I'm not sure who was complaining, we didn't get a name of a caller, but there wasn't any issue on the street that runs along the entrance to the market, I can't remember the name of it, Melody. You know, I only, certainly, we have the ordinance on the books, I'm pretty certain it exists, without having to have the attorney do too much work, because I worked with you to put it together last time you did it. I just have two concerns. One, I don't have the manpower to run around serving notices on those trucks. And secondly, I'm, if we're worried about driving vendors away, I'd be concerned if we start hanging out a bunch of tickets, we'd be driving everybody away.
I agree, I think, I think it's more of a, if our ordinance is written, it's more of a code enforcement.
If they took the paint and just sprayed it themselves, I think that would be the easiest solution without giving them a $250 fine.
No, I agree. I'm not, I'm not interested in doing that, but...
But if the city follows their, our graffiti ordinance, they got 48 hours to take it off or it's a fine, that's it. So, and we'd have to scramble to figure out who was gonna enforce it, because I mean, we don't have enough officers to do it.
I'm not looking to put any more penalties on vendors. I guess what I'm looking for is just to resolve the problem, quick painting of the vehicle and...
A lot of these trucks are pretty big, trailers are pretty long.
Well, Don can lend you a nice big pole, extension pole.
Yeah, no problem, I got one.
And then again, it falls back on if the vendor will allow us to.
Right.
If they say no, I mean, then we write them a citation, and they have a week to fix it under the rules and regulations.
Right. I think we're just trying to make the town look better.
We're not actually thinking about sending our market staff out and having them spray paint over the spray paint.
Actually, what they do now is, they do it inside the grounds. If the vendor says yes, then they do it, right?
Our people do the painting?
Talking about doing is moving that out to the vehicle that are parked on the street.
No, those vehicles have to come in and drop off their stuff.
I think we need to be very careful about having our people spray paint. If we want to give them the paint and let them do it themselves, but I would be very cautious about putting the liability about us doing the paint of a private vehicle.
Yeah, I thought that's what was happening, we were just giving them the paint, or even offering to throw a...
We were addressing every issue that we found.
A tarp or something.
Most of the time, a lot of the people tarped it up.
Yeah.
They would tarp it up versus trying to spray paint it. As long as it was covered, that we had achieved what we had wanted.
Okay. Are we satisfied with that?
Am I satisfied with it? I think it's the best we can do. I think it's a huge problem, and I don't like it. I think we're sending a bad message to people that come here if they see graffiti. And I was wondering, is there any way that we could get these people off the street, maybe make them park? We're gonna love it if we make them park closer to the market. But that's, you know, that's one thing, if you have all these trucks parked...
Whoa.
A spider.
Unwelcome visitor.
Anyway, is there any way we can make them?
We have a designated market parking area right here behind McDonald's, in our lot B. Unfortunately, some of the graffiti happens while they're here.
Yeah, I know. Do we charge them for that parking?
No, we just asked them to park there because we designed it so they can park the bigger vehicles there without getting a ticket.
Let me make a comment. Here we're going full circle around. When I first came, they let those trucks park anywhere. They're parking inside, they were parking right up against the fence, taking all of the thing away from the customer. Right now, the way it is, is it's the most efficient I've seen since we've been here as to how we handle the trucks and still allow the people who buy the products access to the flea market.
And what is that process?
There are certain areas along the roads over on the side and the parking lots, they have to park in outside, and then they don't park along the fence and take up the space for the customers that come in to buy the product.
They still park on the street, like...
I know, but there are certain streets they're supposed to park on, they're supposed to, they align over near the Chaboa Center, and there are specific parking lots that we tell them to park in and to do it in an orderly manner.
Okay.
Right, comfortable, Tim?
I'm comfortable that we're trying to address the issue, yeah.
All right. Comments by staff? Ted, do we have anything?
No, let me say this, that I want to congratulate Armando. I've been here a little over 10 years, and when I, and when I see the growth in the orderliness and making sure that people follow the rules and treating everybody equally, and to have the flea market have an orderly process, we do have that. And I think it's come a heck of a long way. There was some comment about professionalism. I'm gonna tell you right now, the guy that's the most professional in the Sacramento area for running the flea markets, Armando Salas. He knows more about it, he's done it longer. We've had people from other markets come and ask him how to do it, because there's no profession that teaches you how to do it. This is called on-the-job training. And right now, from an efficiency standpoint, I think this market is probably the best that it's ever been.
Thank you, Ted. Comments by council, Vice Mayor Haines?
None, I think it's pretty much been discussed.
Got one item.
Oh, I'm sorry, my comments. Armando, uh, Boyce, don't leave quite yet, I apologize. Don't quite leave, I'm sorry. This has to do, and this has to do with...
Just gonna ask a quick question before we get into this. Does this cover your issue too, Barbara, the community bulletin board?
What did you have?
This is a metal or wooden post to place community signs?
I can combine it, it's the same intention.
What we're talking about is, is we're talking about yard sale signs as well as others. And Ruben Epstein, Ruben, you, I know you're in the audience, you had brought this issue up in the last meeting, and this was also about a year ago. This was brought to my attention. Ted, you and I had discussed this issue, and Boyce, you and I had also discussed this issue of yards or rather garage sale signs on posts, whether it be light posts, stop signs, whatever. This is some of the issues that we've been facing, and it is somewhat of a blight in the community, and people should be expected, I agree, should be expected to remove those signs. And I know that people say they shouldn't put them there, but here's the problem you have with trying to enforce this law, is if you're going to say that you're going to cite people for putting signs up for garage sale signs, you're also gonna have to cite other people for things like lost cats, lost dogs, and/or if somebody's missing a child who puts it up there, you're going to have to further cite them for the same thing. This has been an ongoing issue in the community as well as larger communities, and it's, I went out about a year ago, and I went out, do you remember this? I went out and I cleaned out all the signs I could find on the east side to see how long it would take me, because somebody had contacted me and they felt there was a blight in the community, and I wanted to see how long it would take me to clean it up. Because it's my opinion, it's one of those things that, yes, you have an ordinance on the books, and you're dealing with the spirit of the law, as, you know, or you can, or you can apply the letter of the law. And in my opinion, this is a case where you would apply more the spirit of the law, because being that we're a small community, the last thing that I want to do is go out there and go after people who have missing cats, dogs, or even family members, or garage sales, and cite them. I do believe there is gonna be a case where, the cases or situations where people need to be contacted and told to put their signs, take their signs down. But at the same time, I think we need to have some sort of city policy where we're going out on some sort of a regular basis. You can decide this, Boyce, you and I have talked about it, it's my opinion that we need to make a regular course of our business, that we go out and clean those signs off periodically. And I mean, whether you want to do it weekly, monthly, or whatever, is up to you, but I think there needs to be something in place that does this on a regular basis, because people are complaining about being a blight. And in some cases, I have to agree, it is a blight. And on the other side of the coin, garage sales are part of a small community, and in any community in which you go. And we talk about bulletin boards, and we can do that, but the problem is with yard sales, people are still putting their addresses up there, they're putting arrows to find direction. Even if we put them on a billboard, people aren't gonna necessarily find their way there. I think it's still something we should pursue and look at, and you and I had talked about maybe possibly putting a billboard, a community billboard in parks, shopping centers, maybe even partnering with some groups, maybe even the Lions Club. But I think this is an issue that isn't going to go away, we can consistently see that out there. And I think we need to work on this in a way that we are being a little bit more open-minded to the needs of the community, because this is something a lot of people get involved with, these signs. I mean, what is, and I'd like to hear from the rest of the council on their opinion. I just don't want to be out there enforcing and citing people left and right. I'm not saying it shouldn't be done in some cases, but you need to be very cautious, and I think we need to be somewhat tolerant as a small community. And I'd be interested in hearing from others on that.
Well, do you really want to cite somebody that's lost their dog or their cat?
That's my point, you don't. Or somebody who's lost a child, who's out there putting their child's picture up. I for one would never go out, and I think it'd be kind of a low thing to do, and that's why I'm saying, we're a small community, we need to be somewhat tolerant of these type of things. That's my opinion, and I think we need to, it's a very small investment for us to send somebody out on a fairly regular basis to clean that out and take the signs down. I'm not saying that there aren't gonna be cases where people go too far and shouldn't be cited, that could always occur. And I think we need to do a better job of putting information out there for people to realize, or something in the paper, reminding people that they need to pull their signs down. It needs to be a combination. Ruben, I'm sorry, is it okay for Ruben to speak?
It's me again. What I suggested at the last meeting, I don't know if everybody remembered, was not just a tolerance towards the signs, but a more ordered way of doing it. The item of the agenda speaks to it to some extent. Something like a four-by-four post at various intersections that would be designated as a legal and acceptable place to put up the signs. Not putting them on telephone poles, not taping them to streetlights, you know, that's what looks so unsightly.
Right.
But if there were designated posts or pieces of wood, depending on what designs are finally used, where the signs could go, and I even said possibly a standardized yard sale sign that the city puts together so that they all look the same, and the information can be put there by the people. But it's not just a whole bunch of different colors and shapes, and somebody trying to get theirs bigger than somebody else's and get more attention, but a more orderly way, but an authorized way also, both of how and where, so that the signs all go in the same place, they're not just scattered all over the place. And, you know, besides the yard sales, some of the other problems that were in the newspaper article and on television report about code enforcement trying to do that is reference to any kinds of signs. They could be political signs for the city council or school boards, they could be signs that people are putting up about a festival, or a dinner, or like the Lions Club puts some up for the crab feed and for fireworks.
Or softball teams for the schools.
Yeah, so there are a lot of different signs, I know a lot of times I see them for soccer signups, and they're scattered around.
You know, Ruben, it's not a bad idea, the only problem is, you literally need a post at most intersections in Galt, and then I can see people would put up all different colors of signs and different sizes, and that post would probably turn out as bad-looking as what's happening all over town now.
Now, as I said though, garage sales could be on a standardized form that you get from the city.
But most people won't use that.
But even at that, let me just back you up a little bit, because you're talking about these posts or these boards. Boyce and I talked about this, one of the biggest issues of being able to put them in enough locations is the ownership of the land and getting the owners giving you authority or permission to put these boards up at every location.
They may not be at every location, but it may be better than no locations.
Right.
Right now, according to, at least what I have seen, people trying to follow the ordinance, at least people who know about it, because a lot of people don't and the signs are still wherever they were, is they park a car on C Street or Lincoln Way, and they put up a great big poster board sign, bright green, trying to get people's attention. It actually looks worse than the other signs, and it's not an effective way of having a garage sale, because it's one sign in one location, and the average person doesn't have enough cars to put them on every corner. So they're limited by the size of their automobile fleet. And, you know, I had also mentioned when I, when I talked to Councilman Haines, at the diversity day, maybe it's possible... day, maybe it's possible to attach signs to things like stop signs, using cable flaps, things like that, attach boards where they might be able to use those kinds of existing signs and posts.
We can't do it to that, not stop signs. You can't, you can't have anything that will obstruct or distract a stop sign.
Okay, but there are also street signs, they don't have to be stop signs.
Street signs are the same way, it's an informational...
What's the typical easement on every residential piece of property here in the city? We have three feet from the sidewalk, is that right?
Usually it's right at the back of the sidewalk, except for the older parts of town.
So the property acquisition, that's not really an issue. If we, council decided to put a sign up on the property...
Yeah, but imagine...
We have the legal justification.
Complaints you'd get.
But according to the definitions...
Let me just say something really quick, I think the manager's going to maybe address something else. The biggest issue is not citing the signs or anything else, it's if you put up a location for the display of public information, you can't control what goes on those signs.
Right.
You can't limit it to garage sales. It could be political advertisements, any kind of, you name it, off-the-wall, KKK group, whatever they want to display up there. First Amendment rights, probably display of information, you can't control or limit what goes up there. The attorney can comment on that, but that's the risk of putting them, you could have all kinds of issues on those signs that you don't want up there.
And those billboards could actually compete, in my eyes, and I know what you're saying, I think those could become more of a blight than the garage sales or the pictures of missing children or whatever than the, on the light posts and whatnot. I like the idea, I think we should have some informational boards out there. I just see it very difficult to put them out enough to where people would comply or even, like you say, be consistent in coming to the council or the city hall to get, for example, a garage sale sign that's consistent with the rest of them. That's one of the problems we have because we can't even get them to remove their garage sale signs, much less comply with a consistent form of a garage sale sign. It's an uphill battle.
Well, it's the other thing I mentioned is that the garage sales are a form of recycling and we're trying to promote that.
I agree.
And as I say, what I saw is a news report on television, I don't think was meant to be flattering and it didn't seem flattering.
No, it wasn't and I agree with what they, I agree that there too. It's, when you're talking about these boards, though, they're very difficult to, they'd be very, in my opinion, they'd be very difficult to implement. They could eventually, like you said, anything could be put up on there and they eventually would become more of a blight than the signs themselves. And that's why I'm suggesting is that we have a regular course of business of going out and pulling those signs down on a regular basis, as well as educating and putting something out there to the paper periodically, reminding people to take those signs down if they put them up. Because you're never going to stop them from doing it.
I think what you're doing though is you're creating something, these people are doing things that are illegal. They shouldn't be putting those signs up anyway and they're creating their own hazards for us to want to take our workers and pay to do that, to me is absolutely wrong. What they need to do is, if you're really serious, is you need to put some muscle into it and say, if you do this, you'll get caught and you'll be fined because people are doing it just because they want to do it, just because it's there. And the place that they usually pick is a piece of public property, it's not private. And the worst thing they can do is put it on an informational or a regulatory sign where if somebody's looking at it and they cause an accident or something else, if that happens and somebody come back and said, "City, why didn't you do something with this?" We might be liable for allowing that to even happen.
Well...
With a telephone pole or any type of public place, they shouldn't be putting them on. We went out one day and we had our people pick them up a half a day on one half side of the city and there was a stack of signs about three and a half or four feet high. You tear them down one week and a week later, you got just as many signs as you took down the week before. And the problem, I wouldn't have so much problem if people were responsible, would go pick up their signs and take it back, but that's not what happens. They leave it right there, it blows off, it becomes a hazard, may stick up there till it rots or whatever else because people aren't responsible in taking care of those signs.
I think you'd have a big problem, which I don't even agree with anyway, citing somebody for a sign that you never saw them put up. Because a person could say, "I didn't put that sign up."
Even though it's got their address...
But I wouldn't want to do that anyway. It may have their address, but it doesn't mean they put it up.
No, I agree with that.
Before the TV article and before the newspaper articles, did you really think that this was that big of an issue here in the city? Was it something that you just drove around and just...
I would see them, I'd say, "Well, you know, the thing that annoyed me the most is people put up signs without a whole lot of intelligence and it says garage sale Saturday and Sunday." And I don't know if it's this Saturday and Sunday or three years ago. And, you know, it was primarily lack of information that was annoying. But, you know, they were there, I was used to it. You know, something that I've joked about that, you know, we're enforcing anti-blite laws, are we going to pass a law that says that every two weeks people have to wash their cars because we don't want dirty cars in Galt? Where is the limit on it all? I saw a listing in the paper by code enforcement and then what I would have to call a satirical news report on television saying that Galt was having a hundred dollar fine, sort of in the same vein that Barbara's episode with watering a neighbor's lawn got reported in the papers and on television. And it wasn't real flattering to Galt. And I thought, maybe there's a win-win way of dealing with this. Part of the problem that confused me is that it also said that people would be cited for signs on public property. I don't know where public property is. Now, I have put up signs for various events for the Lions Club. Other people put up other things for similar kinds of things. And I don't know the definition of where those signs might be legal. And I don't think I'm going to be able to get a map from the county or anybody else that clearly tells me where private property is and public property is.
But it should be your responsibility to determine whether or not it's public or private because you're putting the sign up. And no public property should a sign be put on. I mean, that's the way it should be.
There are a lot of things that are true. If that were true, we could start giving people tickets for going twenty-five and a half miles an hour down every street.
That's right.
You know, where do we draw the line on enforcing every law to every letter and having some common sense of what works? Like we're saying, we're a small town, we want to keep it a small town. Well, I thought promoting garage sales and things like that could be classified as a small-town value. I guess it's not.
I believe it is. I agree with you on that. I think it is a small town.
Maybe we can figure out a way of being able to do both. So it looks nice, but we still can let people have information signs up.
There are cities in their sign code have standardized garage sale signs. And what they do is they require someone to come in, they have to put a deposit, they take the signs, they tell them where to put them and what. Then in order to get their deposit back, they have to bring them back and they have formalized that. I'm not recommending that, but I'm saying that has happened in other communities.
But how do you regulate the other areas? What about...
Any sign, you can do the same thing, any type of sign similar to a garage sale.
Because you've got a lot of groups, nonprofits out there, we got a lot of kids out there who do events to raise money for sports. I mean, I'm not looking to, you know, this is a...
They got to follow the law. If you're going to put a sign out, you should be responsible to know what it is and what you're doing.
I agree, Ted, that's your opinion and you're right, just because it's a law, just because it's a law doesn't make it right. Because there's a lot of laws out there on the books that don't make sense. And I stand by what I said earlier, we're a small town, we need to have some tolerance. We need, yeah, working within the spirit of the law, but there's things we can do to make this a better community, but also improve that issue of blight. And it's of my opinion, you get people out there on a regular basis, cleaning a lot of that off for those people who don't have the intelligence to remove it. As far as standardizing the signs, as far as flea, whether it be for a missing child, a missing dog, a garage sale, I'd have no issue with that. I think you're still going to get people who are going to work outside of that, but, you know, if we want to standardize it, I'd have no issue with it. But then you'd have to educate the public and you'd have to make sure that all the groups, whether it be the Lions Club, the Geek Club, whatever clubs they are with the schools that are doing the nonprofits for the kids, they're all going to have to be aware of that law. So, but my bottom line is, got to have some tolerance, it's a small community issue. And I see nothing wrong with it. I just think we need to do a better job as a community.
But I think, I think we do because we don't actively enforce the ordinance, we don't actively go out and try and stop garage sale signs. The only thing we do is once in a while, we will pick some up if they become obvious. But right now, we're not enforcing it to any significant degree at all.
And we're not picking them up in any degree at all because they keep building up.
But here's the thing, if the council wants to have a pickup department and provide the money to go and do it, we can do that. But I'm going to tell you, you're going to talk quite a bit of money if you want them to pick them up on a regular basis.
All right, thanks Ted.
Okay, thanks.
What are you asking council to do?
I'm asking council to provide an expectation, Parks and Recs, on a fairly regular basis, whether it be monthly, to pick up these signs that are on those poles in the regular course of their business if they're out there. It took me about four hours, I did it, I take that back, it took me about eight hours all in all to remove all the signs that I could find on the east side of town, which is a big portion of town. And those signs, some of them had been there literally for months, for months, literally. And I pulled them off the signs, I cleaned off the tape as much as I could, threw it in the trunk of my car and you and I, boys, we talked about it the time I did it. But once you keep those signs cleaned off, I think it's going to be about a four-hour process at most, maybe a whole day. A part-time person could go through town and do it, yeah, it's small cost, but it's a cost I think we can afford and I think we should consider before we go out there trying to cite everybody because of all the other issues, whether it be missing children, et cetera, for all the clubs. And I also ask council to do a regular, something in our newsletters or something out there to remind people that these signs need to be removed.
Councilman Payne, any comments?
On his or my?
On his.
Oh gee, I hate the idea of having our Parks and Recs guys cleaning up after these people. I don't know what the answer is. I think we're, part of my comments is going to be on the community of character. I think part of it's got to be pride in the community coming from the people and educating them. Yeah, I want our town to look good, but I know the situation is, we can only do what we can afford. Parks and Recs already is trying to climb out of a hole. I'm not in favor of putting something else on them.
Councilman Roboy?
I don't think it's unreasonable for Parks and Recs staff or the jail crew to spend a little time pulling signs periodically.
Won't they come out on the weekend?
No, just pull them off and, pull them off and recycle them.
Don't they only come out on the weekend and so if you're tearing them down on the weekend, that's when the garage sales are, so you're not...
It just doesn't seem that unreasonable to do that periodically. I don't think, I don't think you need an allocation or...
It's reasonable to take the jail crew around, all around the community. We'd literally have to have someone supervising them in a vehicle, driving around every neighborhood in the community.
Probably the quickest way of doing it is have a staff member in a vehicle, have a work crew individual, so as you come up to them, just step out of the truck. Because like, if you notice on Lincoln Way, they put them right in the middle of the roadway there on street signs and everything of that nature. So in some locations, if you were, if they were to park properly and everything of that nature, it could take some time. But I would recommend, you'd have to send two staff members to execute the whole process.
Can we get you a bicycle and you'll...
What's that?
Around town, a little bicycle.
Yeah.
Can we bring it...
Little basket.
Bring up something really quick that was mentioned by the police chief. We're talking about making this a community effort. We have a committee that's dedicated to beautification, the beautification committee. It could be something that they might be interested in taking on, getting volunteers on Monday to go out and remove some of these signs, you know, instead of having staff.
Especially some of the people that have been calling us about it and complaining.
Yeah, some of the people, that's right. There's only been a few really, but there's some people that are out there and they're justified and there are concerns and it just means we can do a better job.
Well, for me, this wasn't anything that even caught my attention until it was in the newspaper. It's just not something that stuck out. I don't think that we need to throw any staff time at this because I just, it's a minor issue, but I don't think it warrants having part-time staff members drive around the community and pick them up. I kind of agree with what Ted said, it's not really our responsibility to do that. It falls back on the homeowners that put the garage sale signs out there. We do have a volunteer organization here in the community, the beautification committee, maybe they can drum up some volunteer support. But I agree with Barbara, I don't think that there's anything to justify us asking the Parks and Recreation Department to provide staff time through their budget process to have an employee go out and pull these signs down. I'm just, I don't think it's warranted, so.
How about staff sun?
Boys, you'll drive.
Go ahead, lobby.
Boys, there's a lot of options there as far as how to get it done, is it not?
Yeah, I was, this is the police, I have an idea. Cap strides around a lot too.
There you go.
I mean, make it a city effort.
There you go.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
What's that?
Volunteer membership's going to decline sharply, I think, if we throw that on their shoulders.
I think we should let the beautification committee have a shot at it.
Okay, I agree.
No problem with that. As long as it gets done.
Okay. Any other comments, Vice Mayor Haynes?
No comments.
I'm sorry.
Good, Ruben.
I can understand what you're saying, but I have one question that I'm confused about. Is code enforcement going to enforce the existing law and fine people a hundred dollars if they find a sign up? That's what it says they're going to do. That was in the paper, in an article written by code enforcement.
How could they legally do that unless they saw the person put up the sign?
I don't know. It said that they would track them back if the address was there.
There's no proof that that person did it.
I agree. But somebody certainly can get hassled even if it's not legal and they still try to do it. So it's kind of a draconian threat over people in the city as to what is legal or not legal. And then people are put in sort of a catch 22 position. Or some people put it up and they get away with it, others don't. I think it needs to be fair and I think it needs to be clear. And right now, to me, it's not clear. The city council is saying it's not a problem, it won't be enforced, code enforcement says it will be enforced. Who do I believe?
Oh, there's your answer.
Like a simple question.
Lauren's got his hand up in the back.
I don't think we made a, we don't regularly, I heard Ted say we don't regularly enforce this, but it's not quite as simple as Tim's statement that just because we don't see you means we can't prosecute you. If through the course of an investigation, you admit you did it or there's you on video from the store across the street doing it, there can certainly be a prosecution for misdemeanor not committed in your presence. We could file it that way.
What DA would take that case?
Probably not many, but you know what, all we have to do is file the case and then if the citizen wants to fight it, then that's up to the citizen who has his right. The point is, isn't the city's responsibility to win, it's our responsibility to enforce the law. And again, nobody is suggesting we enforce this thing night and day, but we don't enforce the speed limit all the time, but we enforce it enough where people are going, "Well, I better watch how fast I go, the cop might catch me." So what you have to have is enough so people at least have some mind that there's a law out there that prohibits this. And then if you do it, you do it at your own risk. I mean, we probably won't catch many, but, you know, if you catch somebody in the act, then, you know, should you not give them a ticket? Maybe it depends on what they're doing.
I didn't say that, I didn't say in the act though. I said, you see a sign there and you go to your house and you write them a citation, that's what I said.
But I think Mr. Epstein's argument is that, can you prosecute this? Yes, you can. Is it illegal? Yes, it is. Should we make precedent that we ignore laws? Well, let's leave it to the discretion of the employees like the cops or the code enforcement guy. If it's your missing daughter, I doubt we're writing anyone a ticket.
Right.
I mean, I don't think anyone's going to do that.
Well, here's the thing is that Ruben said it himself, you know, somebody went out and hooked up to somebody else's home and watered their grass for them and got cited. And now we're going to turn around and look at the commotion that that caused and the big public display that that became. And now if somebody goes out and they put their child's picture up on there and/or a missing dog or a missing cat or a group who's trying to raise funds for somebody who passed away and we're going to cite them, can you imagine then what kind of...
But it's dangerous government to start imposing what laws people enforce and which ones they want.
But we're not saying don't enforce it, we're just giving examples of...
Right, no, and I understand, I think that what we do is with the city staff, we enforce, you know, good discretion, okay? Right, no, and I understand, I think that what we do is with the city staff, we enforce, you know, good discretion, okay.
I agree with you, Chief, I think the discretion should fall on the officers and the code enforcement.
The other thing I was gonna say is since that article's in the paper, I haven't seen that many garage sales, so maybe just occasionally, you know, kinda do a crackdown like you do with other things you're trying to enforce.
We could put something in our newsletters, reminding, or letting people know that it's illegal to do it, and put information out there, I think that's something else that needs to be added into it, but I've already made my, I pretty much made my position.
So Ted, can you make sure that code enforcement puts something in our next newsletter that addresses what the Vice Mayor's talking about?
Yeah, and I'd like to extend this as long as I can. If we had, no, if we have a code enforcement, if we have a complaint and they call in and say, we'd like to complain, we saw such and such put something out there on the corner, then code enforcement will go and they'll call them, and even if they don't know who it is, they'll say, somebody observed this, blah, 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 and we'll make the contact. We may not do anything else, but we will try and at least notify people. But most of the time, I'd say 95% of the time, you're never gonna see the people put the sign up. I mean, that's just, that's just the way it is.
Thank you, Ted, any other comments, Don?
I think I pretty much expressed myself.
Okay, Councilwoman Payne?
I'm gonna make my comment brief on the community bulletin board. It was this suggestion, and I talked to Boys about it, and he had the idea of seeing if the grocery stores would put something up in their parking area, because everyone goes to the grocery store, so it's highly visible, but Boys, they weren't interested in doing that, and like you talked to someone I did.
Well, I talked to Randy Lawrence, he said he would be willing to do it, but he doesn't have the storefront, he has all windows in his storefront, so he was unable to do it. He recommended, I don't know who you spoke to at...
Didn't wanna mention it on...
Yeah, but not the manager so much, but as the landlord, he's out of town right now, but...
I talked to the person you suggested I talked to, remember?
Yeah, okay, yeah, 'cause actually that was, I was taking it one step further, I was, for a community project for Lions Club, Ruben Epstein's organization, that they could do a community bulletin board at the, say, the local grocery stores, 'cause one thing, people need to go here in the community or a grocery store. So initially, even, I ran this past Don too, that the possibility of, with these bulletin, community bulletin boards, that they'd be made available for garage sale signs. But again, are those effective though, 'cause most of the time, they want them down at the end of the street saying, hey, the house down the corner, so I don't know how effective those would be.
Another thing is with those community boards, like we said before, you can put anything, anybody can put anything they want, looking for a roommate, whatever you want, and it's only so big.
So, and those garage sale signs are usually like eight and a half by 11, 'cause they do it on their computer, but...
I'd ask our city attorney if he had any information on how that would be legal as to restrict what you could put on a community bulletin board. Did you find any information on that?
Yes, I did, and you're, you're going to be surprised about how complicated it can be just to have a darn community bulletin board, but whenever you, whenever you put up a bulletin board or a kiosk, it's what's called a limited public forum, and depending upon what you want to allow up there dictates how it can be regulated. If it's just commercial advertisements, a good example would be bus stops. There are a lot of communities rent out space and put up advertisements. You can, you can be pretty restrictive on the type of content that's on commercial advertising. When you open it up and it's not commercial, when it's non-commercial, non-commercial messages, community informational things, community bulletins, and you're in this domain that it's very hard to regulate, and you cannot control always the content of what folks put up there. And sometimes you'll do it for 10 years and you'll never have a problem, and then other times, all of a sudden, you know, some folks start putting up advertisements that are offensive to folks, and it's a message that you can't regulate. And I'll give you two quick examples of communities that had problems. One community had poles, and they'd put up a banner about community events, things happening. It's not commercial, it was just community events. And a, during the political season, somebody wanted to put a political banner up there, and the city said no, went to the Superior Court, the judge said that they could not regulate the content, they needed to allow the ad to go up, city ended up cutting the poles down to avoid the controversy. Another situation was, had an aquatic center, in order to raise funds for the, for the aquatic center, they would lease out space, some was commercial, but they also extended it into non-commercial. Rotary Club wanted to put a banner up, and then they had a religious organization come along and put an advertisement in, and in order to not put up the religious advertisement, which was causing some folks of the community heartburn, they had to terminate the program. So it's just an example of where, you know, it can go along fine for a long time, but when you get into that zone of just having non-commercial messages, you cannot always regulate it. Sometimes you can regulate it, just hope that you don't get somebody that really wants to push the envelope.
You could put it up until it gets out of hand, then you can cut it down, like that.
Well, you can do that, or I think you could have some very defined things. I mean, if you wanted to have a bulletin board for garage sale signs, and that was it, I think that you'd probably be able to do that for, without much interference.
So you're saying you could regulate it to just garage sale signs?
Well, I think that if you did that, you'd have a higher chance of folks not pushing the envelope. If you just said, this is a community bulletin board for messages of interest, and you know, then you get some club that is maybe not a mainstream organization that puts a message up about their meetings, you might have difficulty in restricting that.
I was wondering if the council, other council members thought that would be something to pursue, a community bulletin board, maybe at the Smud Park or Harvey Park or the West Side, and if not, then there's no use.
Based on what he just said...
We didn't hear what the city attorney...
Based on what he just said, I wouldn't wanna do it. I think you'll find some very inappropriate stuff up there very quickly.
It wouldn't take any time at all.
Just a suggestion. The other item that I have, if I can move on, Mayor, while, so Sandy can go home. If you could put the pictures up of the fence. If you'll recall, this lady has come to the council twice regarding her request to extend her three-foot fence to six-foot, and the pictures will show... If you could zero in on this one that shows, has a good view of the fence and the street and the... What would it be, the third one from, the middle one? This is her backyard, and you can see the posts, yeah, yeah, that's it. You can see the, you could have seen the posts were already in place, and to the average citizen, it just seems... It seems unfair to say that she can't go ahead and put six-foot, six-foot pickets on those posts.
Greg, what are you doing to that thing?
And I have to say that I read the memo that I got from the planning or community development department, and I really couldn't understand it, especially the part where you're talking about the 80-foot right-of-way. But first of all, you know, why did this person come to the city? It's a backyard fence, it stops at the back corner of the house. Was there a permit required for her to do that, or was she just trying to be conscientious and get the approval of the city?
I'm not sure what the impetus was for her to come to the planning department. I think it was an odd situation that there were six-foot posts there, what we speculate happened, 'cause she was a fairly recent purchaser of that property, is that someone tried to install a six-foot fence, and at some point, code enforcement or a building inspector stopped them and said, you're violating setback requirements, and then probably talked to the planning department and was told that they can only do a three-foot fence in that location. So they basically just left the post and built three feet of fence, or cut it down or something.
Then can you explain the rest of it? Because I couldn't understand the 80-foot right-of-way either, reading it.
Probably the best way is to start off with the situation in new subdivisions, just so I can kinda contrast what's happening in the old town area. In a new subdivision, you typically have a 50-foot wide right-of-way for a residential street. When you start at the center line and you go toward the house...
Center line of the street.
Center line of the street, there's a 12-foot travel lane, then you've got about nine feet of a parking lane with the rolled curb and gutter. So that's 21 feet, then you got a four-foot sidewalk, so there's 25 feet. And you do that on the other side, you've got a 50-foot street and a 50-foot right-of-way. So it works out nicely, everybody's happy, the back of right-of-way is at the back of sidewalk. In newer parts of town, the zoning code, and, well, everywhere in town, the zoning code basically says, on a street side yard, which I believe this is...
It's a corner house.
Yeah, it's a corner lot, the front is on the other street, this is the street side. There is, in new areas, a 12 and a half foot public utility easement behind the right-of-way. So after the sidewalk, you have 12 and a half feet of utility easement.
In new areas or old areas?
In new areas.
In new areas.
We allow people to put a three-foot fence all the way up to property line. So you could do at the back of the sidewalk, a little three-foot picket fence or solid fence, however you wanna do it. If you wanna go any taller than three feet, we want you to set back a minimum of 10 feet. Part of that is for sight distance at corners.
In front of the back corner of the house, I can see if it comes up to the, closer to the front of the house where a person turning wouldn't be able to see, but if it's totally at the back of the house like this is, I don't see why not.
Part of it's also so that you have some green space, you don't have, like on Elm Avenue, a lot of people complain about the way Elm Avenue looks on the residential portion, where you have the wall right at the back of sidewalk. It would be much nicer to have a landscape area than the six-foot wall. We have the same issue on Emerald Oak on a couple of locations, you'll see when you go down that the fence is right at the back of walk. It's very difficult to walk on a four-foot sidewalk, especially if you're with someone with a six-foot fence right there.
So how are they able to do that?
That one, it was a very early subdivision that it ended up being a reverse, it had a, two frontages, it goes all the way through, 'cause it's a front on the cul-de-sac and then the back's on the other street. And then it had a third side, 'cause it's on the corner, I think that was just an oversight by the planners at the time.
Part of this is a change in, in development standards. It used to be that areas were reserved within the street for the utilities, we call the dry utilities, phone, power, those kind of things. By putting that in an easement under the lot, it's included in the lot area. So you have smaller area given for street, you get more lots per acre. So as developments move forward, you want, the almighty dollar says we need more lots. It counts, it doubles as front yard and as a utility easement. So the space that is right now reserved in the quote "street right-of-way" is now in the front yards, and that's been, been part of the trade-off. But the actual property line is what has moved basically closer to the street, and the, most of the ordinances don't make an allowance for that, the setbacks are from the property line. It doesn't say whether there's an easement area. It's also possible, in all these older areas, the streets were planned to be widened in the future. If they have 80-foot right-of-way, they reserved it for a future street widening, and this was done several years ago. And so if we had needed additional lanes, we could widen out and take that area.
But realistically, in that old part of Galt, and that street's already pretty wide, I can't see us wanting to widen it. And then there's another house just a little ways down that has the six-foot fence, it's a corner lot. I guess what I really wanna know is, is there any way that we can, as a city, try to accommodate this person? It's kinda, I'm gonna have to quote Don on this, we make laws, but sometimes we don't always enforce them, or we're flexible, as times change, the chance of this street wanting to be widened. I think it runs by the Grange, in the old part of Galt, it's pretty remote. So as a city trying to serve our citizens, is there any way that we can let this happen?
Yeah, what the pass-through memo tried to convey was that there's a couple of options if you want to accommodate this type of situation.
We can't just let her take the three-foot pickets down and put six-foot up?
You could, she, she right now is on her property line.
Yep.
So the excess, there's about 11 and a half feet of dirt behind, behind the curb. Right, and that, that is city-owned property, that is city right-of-way. There needs to be a four-foot sidewalk in there, so that leaves us with about seven and a half feet of dirt before the fence. So she is technically on her property line. What she's not doing is meeting the additional 10-foot setback that we require of everyone else in the city. But, you know, the city council could determine that Old Town is a unique situation, and we could add a, we could basically amend the zoning code, add a footnote or something, define a geographic area in which if you have an 80-foot right-of-way and you're in this area, you can put your six-foot fence at the property line instead of the 10-foot setback.
But wasn't that gonna be at the expense of the, of the property owner? And I would venture to guess that these, this lady, the lady that lives there is actually the mother of the lady that came. She lives there, I think with her grandson, and I can't see her being able to afford a big bill of zoning change. And I thought I read that was gonna be on, on the cost.
Kurt estimated 40 hours, it's not a hard process, it's just a procedural one to amend the zoning code. You have to do public notice, get to the planning commission, you have to go to the city council. So he basically estimated it would take 40 hours to write staff report, do all the investigatory stuff, and the procedure. It's up to city council if that is then the applicant, if you wanna call her that, responsibility, or if city council directs staff to prepare a zoning code amendment.
Steve, I contacted you too to see if there was any way that it wouldn't be so arduous to accommodate this person?
I looked at the code, and I think absent, absent a code amendment, which council can certainly direct staff to come forward with one, that there's no mechanism to allow this fence to be increased. It is a six-foot fence within this location, is not allowed under the code that's currently, you know, currently in place. I think typically on a code amendment of this nature, that would have a broader, a broader sweep than just that particular lot. It's usually be brought forward as a, basically a city-initiated code amendment. And I think you'd have to look at what would be the impacts on a, on a broader basis than just this, this particular lot.
If we were to amend the code for this Old Town area, which is kind of what we're looking at, would we be able, if we wanted to, also not make or pay the fee? Is that an option that we would have also?
Yeah, that's, if city council directs staff to prepare it, then it would be a city-initiated, and that fee would just come out of general fund as normal.
And what are we looking at here, a couple hundred?
Now, a rezoning, a text amendment, I believe is right about 3,000. We also have to prepare a California Environmental Quality Act analysis.
You know, it's so depressing.
You're looking at a few hundred for that.
The laws are supposed to be made for the people, you know, not to cause them these kind of headaches.
But if it's city-initiated, most of that cost is going to be staff time and then the public notice in the newspapers, so...
You guys are worth somebody to do. So I, you know, you've seen the pictures, there's other pictures there that show different views, the front view. There's another house on the street just down from there that has gone ahead and put the fence up on their own. We don't wanna cause them any trouble. I guess it's up to the council now to see if they would want to look at accommodating the citizen or say, sorry.
I guess for me, I would have to go with staff and take a tour of this area and all other areas that this would affect, because I can't tell from the pictures and get a good feel for this. I would really need to kinda go out there with staff and see what else this would affect.
And you know, I would recommend it because when it first came up, I couldn't get a visual picture of it, but when I went and looked at it, it just seemed so silly, that, you know, the posts were there, there was seven and a half foot from the back of the sidewalk to the fence. You know, it just seems like if we ever wanted to widen that road or put in utilities, either way, she'd have to take down the fence. So it seems like if she were agreeable, and know that if anything happened in the future, that the city wanted to put utilities or widen it, that we'd take the fence down and we wouldn't put it up, and...
Barbara, we have a mechanism in place as revocable permit. I believe with the fence where it is, is actually on her property. So she could put, if we changed the code, she can put a six-foot fence there, and there would be no need to take it down, because that is not public right-of-way, that's her property. She was wanting to move it forward adjacent...
No, she wasn't wanting to move it at all.
There was a discussion about doing that, and we do have a mechanism called a revocable permit, where if someone wants to install a fence within the right-of-way, we allow them to do that. There's a cost to process that permit. At this case where there's a land that's not being used, roads aren't gonna be widened now, we provide four feet of access, and they could use that space in case of times you wanna widen the road. We provide four feet of access, and they could use that space, and suppose at times you want to widen the road. We can do that.
So did she want to move it right to the street?
She doesn't want to move it at all.
She's asking to go in place and just-
Go up.
Just go up where it is now.
But there may be others that, that are in right-of-way now and want to legalize those.
They are there. I, I saw them, yeah.
We, we prefer not to take the approach of the revocable permit, just because subsequent property owners never know that that's on their deed. They're building sheds in the right-of-way. They're building anything else, cause they think that's their property. It just causes lots of problems. We'd rather, if we're gonna do something, just make it that we reduce the setback, but keep them out of the public right-of-way area at least.
Do you understand, all she wants to do is go from three-foot up, and it's at the back of the house, so there's no way that it's going to be a vision problem for a car trying to turn or-
Yeah, I, I really gotta see it and see the whole neighborhood around there. I don't know about the rest of the council.
Well, I already went out and looked at it, and, uh, I kind of got the same opinion that Barbara has. It just, it seems like we're really nickel and diming this homeowner. It doesn't seem like it's a major request.
But, but according to the attorney, we have to do this, not for this home, but the whole area.
For everybody, yeah.
So we have to consider all these homes, how this would affect everybody.
I think I'd like to take a look at it, see it in its entirety.
Maybe staff could take-
Maybe that would be a good way to go.
Could take us out there and show us what's going on with, with everything.
Okay. Is that okay, Barbara?
Sure. I just, uh, appreciate you taking the time to give her the opportunity. The last thing I have, um, uh, you know, we had our diversity day that was sponsored by the Community of Character, and I thought it was very successful. Uh, what the coalition would like to do is get permission from the council to frame, uh, the pledge, which has the words integrity, honesty, respect, pride in community, responsibility, caring and compassion. Has the city, uh, logo on it, as well as the two schools, and just, uh, uh, hang it on the wall someplace, um, in the chambers, just, you know, to show that we are a dignified, honest, respectful, et cetera, uh, council. Um, so I would just like your, as the council's opinion, if, if that would be okay. We would frame it. Have Liz or Jennifer find an appropriate place to display it, but we'd like it to be in the council's.
So you're not saying that we have to recite that before every meeting?
No, no.
You okay with that, Don?
I'm okay with it.
That's fine with me.
It's fine.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm done.
All right, Councilman Reboi.
I'm gonna skip the police report, because we're out of time, and we have a long, closed session to get back into, but I have to read a quick statement. Um, well, first I have to respond to, uh, Mr. Ferguson, who was kind of challenging me on BUG and some of these committees in, in the, in the city, and some of their issues that they've committed. Um, first on BUG, the state of California decided that BUG, Businesses United for Good Government, which is a Chamber of Commerce PAC, committed serious and continual violations of campaign laws in the state of California. So that was decided by the state of California, that wasn't decided by Galt. I have not heard a similar FPP decision regarding the Consumes Committee. When I have that, when I have heard that decision, I will be equally strong in my comments toward that committee. So when the state makes a decision, or if they do, then I'll be just as strong against that committee. On the other issue, we've heard some negative comments, mostly positive, but a few negative comments on Andrew's proposal. His, both his solar proposal and his other proposal. And I think part of the negativity is that the word Berkeley, and people seem to hate the city Berkeley, at least some people in Galt do, but Berkeley's not the only city that's done this. Uh, the city of Palm Desert has done this. So if he would have substituted Palm Desert for Berkeley, I don't think we would have had as many negative comments about this proposal.
I think there's some truth to that, but I think a lot of, a lot of the negativity just goes back to the fact that some of these residents just don't agree with anything that I do, so, I mean, you just, you can't please everybody. I think that's something that you learn to accept when you get into public office like this.
Amen to that.
The, the solar portion that was brought up again today, it's just one part of the proposal that I brought forward. You know, I, I got a, I got about seventy emails and phone calls about this in the last week, and only three of them have been relatively negative, so I'm pretty comfortable with the way that it looks moving forward, and I hope that Mr. Boner will come forward, uh, when I bring this in October, because we'll have experts here that'll be able to, uh, talk about exactly how much it's gonna cost to install, and about some of the effects of net metering, which hasn't even entered the discussion yet. People don't understand that in California, the utility is required to pay you for the electricity that you're generating in your home that you're not using. So if, when you're not home during the day when you're at work, your utility company is paying you for all the electricity that you're generating, so. You know, and I'll cover all that in October when I bring this back, so.
Last thing I wanted to read is an article in a magazine regarding, um, Hawaii. And it says, "Some residents of the Aloha State will soon be sunbathing every day that it's washing in sun-warmed water. Thanks to a bill championed by the Sierra Club's Hawaii Chapter and passed by the state legislature in May, all single-family homes built after two thousand nine must be equipped with solar water heaters." All single-family homes. The measure promised as reduction in both household, household electricity bills and statewide greenhouse gas admissions. According to Hawaii Chapter Director Jeff Mukalina, passing the bill was the single biggest step the legislature took this year to increase Hawaii's energy security. With Governor Linda Lingle's, the Republican, signing the measure into law in June, and prom, promising to introduce legislation that will expand solar tax credits, the state is setting a shining example for the rest of the country. So Galt is not, um, setting new ground here. The whole country is moving toward this, so we're just kind of, um, doing our part like we should do. So I appreciate Andrew's hard work on that issue.
That's it.
All right. Just wanted to update the community on a couple of meetings that I had in the last week. Uh, last week, the city manager and I sat down with the elementary school district superintendent to discuss some issues relating to the Boys and Girls Club and my, uh, initiative to strengthen local families. We also met yesterday with a resident that was concerned about, uh, train noise, and actually put together quite a extensive presentation on how it might be possible for the city to acquire funding to pay for some of the, uh, silencing mechanisms in our Old Town area, so. And actually, since Mr. Baldwin's here, we had, we'd brought this up with, uh, Mr. Hodge, who's the resident that we met with yesterday. He'd like to sit down and meet with all of us in the group, if you'd be open to that, cause I know you, you looked at this before, so. Great. Okay, and that's all I've got, so at this time, Will, you got something?
Mr. Mayor, um, there's two, uh, two procedural items. Um, the, uh, city manager has asked to the council to consider an amendment to the agenda to add an item that's not on your agenda. Um, the Brown Act allows the city council to add an item to the agenda under certain scenarios. In this situation, it would be upon a determination by two-thirds vote of the members that there's a need to take immediate action, and the need came to the attention of the local agency subsequent to, uh, the agenda being posted, and I'll let the manager, add on to that. And then the other item that I think we ought to consider is waiving the eleven o'clock rule before we go back into closed session, so we don't have to come back out.
The issue has to do with a potential lawsuit. It has to do with, uh, an agreement that we have with, uh, other cities.
Did you say lawsuit again?
Potential.
Okay. This is the item that we already covered briefly that you would ask in a closed session? Okay. I'm okay with it.
So do we vote on that?
Yeah, that, that'd be a, a motion, uh, move to, a motion proposed to be moved to, uh, amend the agenda to add a closed session item. Anticipated litigation, one case undisclosed.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Prove four to zero. Do we have a motion to waive the eleven o'clock rule while we're in closed session?
I'll make a motion for that.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Prove four to zero. This time we'll adjourn to closed session, and we will re-adjourn out here in regular session to disclose any reportable items.